Hear me, hear me.
Good evening, everyone. We will call the July 16, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is roll call. Charlene?
Lorente.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Sasso.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
We have Quorum.
And the next order of business is invocation, and we'll recognize Lee Rempel from Habitat for Humanity. Lee, everyone please rise.
Please join with me in prayer. Father, we come before you as we gather for public service here, and we thank you for the example of your son, Jesus Christ, who showed us how to serve and love others. We just ask that you would guide our thoughts, guide our actions and deeds in your ways, and we thank you. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lee. The next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions to tonight's agenda? We do have one removal, and that's item number two, employee awards. We will not have any employee awards other than item number four, the firefighter of the year award. Do we have any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the change noted? Motion by Doyle, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number one, which is veteran of the month, and if the Ward One Alderman and Mr. Laverne Bowes could join me down front. Laverne is a South Dakota native, born in 1950, July 10, belated happy birthday, and raised in Bone Steal, South Dakota. He graduated from Bone Steal High School in 1968. In February of 69, he joined the U.S. Navy, the start of a 20-year career. After boot camp, he qualified for the in-flight communication program on the P-3 Orion aircraft. Laverne attended the Navy Avionics A-School in Memphis, and after A-School was sent to in-flight training in San Diego. When he completed these required schoolings, he was assigned to various VP squadrons throughout the Navy and around the world qualifying for his aircrew wings. In the early '70s, he was deployed to Southeast Asia three different times. In 1986, he was promoted to the rank of Master Chief Petty Officer E-9, and reassigned to Washington, D.C. as Special Operations Detailer. In February 1989, he transferred to Fleet Reserve and retired.
Mr. Bowes came from South Central South Dakota and achieved the highest enlisted rank in the United States Navy. He served an honorable and distinguished career before retiring at the rank of E-9, Master Chief Petty Officer. After leaving the Navy, Laverne became involved in the real estate business. He owns and operates Century 21 Franchise Real Estate Agencies in Rapid City, South Dakota, and Manassas, Virginia. His educational accomplishments include an Associate of Arts degree in marketing and a Master's degree in common sense from his father. I love that. He has an in-depth education and certification in real estate equivalent to a Master's in Education. His award, ribbons, and decorations include: the Air Medal with two Strike Flight Awards, Navy Commendation Medal with Bronze Star, two Navy Achievement Medals, United States Coast Guard Unit Commendation Medal, Navy Meritorious Unit Commendation, United States Coast Guard Meritorious Unit Commendation, Navy E-Award, Navy Good Conduct Medal with four Bronze Oakleaf Clusters, National Defense Service Medal, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Humanitarian Service Medal, Navy Sea Service Deployment Ribbon with two Stars, Vietnam Civil Action Unit Citation, First Class Color with Palm, and Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. Mr. Bowes married Lillian Chan of San Jose, California, in February 1972. They have two children, their daughter Julia and her husband Mark Neisley have two children and live in Manassas, Virginia. Their son Edward and his wife Katie live in Blacksburg, Virginia. Laverne's most memorable and outstanding moment was prior to retirement when he was asked by the Chief of Naval Personnel to extend his enlistment for possible consideration as Master Chief Petty Officer of the United States Navy. That's huge. Mr. Bowes served his country with pride, honor, and integrity. He is a true patriot of the United States, the United States Navy, his city, and his family. He is most deserving as veteran of the month.
I tell you what, that Masters in Common Sense came from my father, and he was a size 12 foot. If a lot of our youngsters today had that, maybe we wouldn't have the problems that we've got today. But, that being said, if there's a job worth doing, it's worth doing well. I thank you very much.
Four. So if the Ward Four council members could come up, Amanda and John, and then also Tim Piper and the Fennhouses. Kathy, if you could come on up and assist with the awards. We'll first recognize tonight, Tim Piper, and for his yard of the month. And Kathy, would you tell us a little bit about Tim's award?
He received the... You know my voice doesn't carry that well? Tim received the yard of the month for June, and that is an award that is given by the City Beautification Committee. He happens to live just a block away from my sister, and I saw the yard and loved it, so I nominated him. He failed to attend last month, so that's why he's here now. But it's a lovely yard, filled with a lot of zeroscaping. He has a lot of rock, and has an amazing, I've forgotten, sumac that's in the front, by his front house, front yard door. And that's what I was so impressed with, in part because I'd never seen anything that large. But he also receives a gift certificate from Black Hills Nursery for $25. Then the July award winner is the Fennhouses, and their yard actually was recommended to me by a member of the City Parks Department that is no longer with us, Debbie Ellerton. And I finally got there this year to check it out myself, and it would have loved it. It's on a corner lot, and it's amazing. I told them that some of the best yards in town are on corner lots, but they've done a lot of work, and it's an amazing... It's on Herman, right, and Crestview. So it's kind of kitty quarter from school in North Rapid. And they also receive a gift certificate, and this one is from Noctals. Thank you.
Chief Mike, come up. And Kalen. Is Kalen here tonight? Kalen, we want to take a moment and thank you for your committed service to our fire department and to our community, and in a few moments, we'll be presenting you with a very expensive gold nugget, but until... Just kidding, just kidding. I do have a proclamation that Chief Mike will read.
This is presented to firefighter Kalen Meningas in recognition and utmost appreciation of his audacious, dedicated, and selfless service with the city of Rapid City and Rapid City Fire Department. During Kalen Meningas's outstanding career, he has displayed an exceptional record of exemplary and courageous service to the community and the nation. The degree of extraordinary commitment is indicative of the esteemed core values and traditions of the firefighter profession, further manifested by the high degree of admiration and respect from both his peers and the local public he serves. Kalen Meningas is truly an ultimate credit to all firefighters, and this honor reflects the proudest ideals of the veterans of foreign wars, excuse me, foreign wars of the United States.
Thank you, Chief Mayor. It is indeed an honor, as commander of Post 1273, Russell Post 1273, the local chapter of VFW, to submit Kalen's nomination. And you won statewide, that's huge, and I expect you have a good shot at winning nationwide, so we hope to have you back. The VFW not only supports veterans who have served in combat and not, but also we are very strong in promoting citizenship through our programs with the schools, and citizenship and all of that stuff, and this is one way of reaching out to acknowledge other heroes that have served us and served us well. Kalen, congratulations. I hope we're up here with a national award.
Real quick while I have you too, I'm just going to give you a couple of brief things about Kalen. He is an exceptional employee for the Rapid City Fire Department. Just want to make note, he is not the first public servant in Rapid City from this family. His father, probably taking pictures somewhere, Dr. Pete Meningas, served in early '90s as Rapid City's medical director, which he was an emergency room physician at the time, and he was in charge of all the protocols and the way we did business in medical responses in Rapid City for both the fire department and the ambulance. As a young firefighter, I worked under Dr. Meningas's license, and he taught a great deal of good responses to what we do in Rapid City, and still today, his legacy lives on in EMS in Rapid City. So Kalen comes from good roots. Just a little bit about him, he is involved in so many things, I couldn't stand here without listing real quick, but he's on our technical rescue team, which takes hundreds of hours of training to become a technical rescue person, a water rescue team member, he's on our public education team, he's instrumental in our Toys for Tots programs that we do in Rapid City, MDA, Fill the Boot, Guns and Hoses, Blood Drive, which many of you may have participated in here in the last couple of weeks. He serves on multitude of different department committees. He has recently completed his bachelor's degree and is now working on his master's degree. He's got a very, very short career with the fire department, but a lot of impacts he's already had on organization and the community, and I can only anticipate, we'll see him in a white shirt someday with gold insignia, and I wouldn't be surprised if he's a chief officer in Rapid City someday. So he is an outstanding individual, and I am very, very proud of him, as you can tell. So, thanks, Kalen.
Creek Johnny Two Nugget. And if Chris Johnson from the Clock Shop could come up.
My name is Chris Johnson. I'm president of Mountain Time Incorporated, otherwise known as The Clock Shop. I want to thank, along with my son Trevor, Mayor Quaker, and the City Council for inviting us this evening to unveil to you a very special piece of history, which apparently will be leaving our hands sooner than we expected. But, all kidding aside, congratulations to Kalen for your award. We're very proud of you. What you're going to be seeing tonight, to make it a short story, and I would hope to do that tonight, is a very special new creation of the Black Hills. In 1929, a nugget was found by a man named Johnny Parrott. You may well have heard of him by now. He became known as Potato Creek Johnny. He found this nugget in Potato Creek in the Black Hills. It is now known as the largest nugget from the Black Hills in existence. And now we'll fast forward to 2010. Another nugget was found by two hard-working prospectors named Charlie Ward and Byron Janice. And that nugget was brought into our store, and we examined it, and we thought, boy, this is a very special thing, so we bought it. And we did some research and found that, indeed, this is the second-largest nugget to exist in the Black Hills history. It's the largest undisputed nugget. Because the Potato Creek Johnny Nugget always had a little bit of conspiracy around it or suspicion that he may have created that, but nonetheless, it is known as the largest nugget in existence from the Black Hills, and it has been appraised at $500,000. The Icebox Nugget, as our nugget is now known, has been appraised at nearly $200,000. And the reason I'm telling you about the values of these nuggets is very important because two months ago, through the generosity of the Adams Museum, we were able to make an exact replica using the gold that was found around the Icebox Nugget, little pieces of gold that accumulated to over 10 ounces. We cast the identical replica of the Potato Creek Johnny Nugget, the only one made out of gold ever to be made. That nugget's going to be auctioned off this coming September, and we do hope that it's going to draw a lot of money because I have two very special people beside me, and first of all, I want to introduce our wounded warrior. Through a series of events, we determined that the proceeds from this auction will go equally to the Adams Museum, which was very generous in offering their nugget for reproduction, and the Wounded Warriors Project. And I have with me Mr. Justin Shellhammer. He's a very brave veteran of our armed forces. He was a military policeman in 2005 when he was on patrol in Afghanistan, and he stepped on a landmine and lost his leg. He now, much to the surprise of most people who see him walk around, has a prosthetic leg. And he represents the wounded warrior portion of what we hope to achieve here. And Justin's going to share a couple of words with you, but first, I would like to introduce the Executive Director of Deadwood History Foundation, the person who was probably the most instrumental in making this happen, Ms. Mary Kopko.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Quaker, City Council members. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Mostly, I just want to say thank you to the outstanding Rapid City Business, The Clock Shop. Both Chris and Trevor Johnson have made it possible for us to raise lots and lots of money. The Adams Museum will use the money to create a secure environment so that we can forever display the original Potato Creek Johnny Gold Nugget at the Adams Museum. And then I'd like to turn it over to Justin Shellhammer, who is going to talk just a few minutes about what the Wounded Warrior Project has meant to him.
Hello, everybody. Like they said, my name's Justin Shellhammer. The Wounded Warrior Project does a lot of things to help out families, to get you out in different events, and to get you out and let you know that just because you have something monumental happen in your life where you lose your leg, doesn't mean life's over with and you don't have to sit in the closet and cry yourself to sleep every night. It did tremendous things, letting my kids grow up. They grew up around other people that have disabilities, and I guess I can't really say much more than what they have already said. And if you'd like to know more information about it, you can go to the woundedwarriorproject.org and find out anything. But in closing, I would like to challenge each and everybody here tonight to come to the auction for PCJ II and try to get this as much money for the Adams Museum and the Wounded Warrior Project as possible because I'm pretty sure everybody here knows somebody in the military, past, present, or future, and the bad thing is, it's going to, there's going to be more veterans that are injured, so I want to make sure this is going on for a long time. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. So without further ado, Justin, I think we're going to let you do the honors of unveiling not only the PCJ II, but you have the honor of seeing the original Potato Creek Johnny Nugget and the Icebox Nugget accompanying it. Go ahead. And we took the liberty of filming this earlier, so you can see the two nuggets. It's hard to tell them apart, of the Potato Creek Johnny Nugget and the PCJ II, and then the one down in the bottom of the screen there is the Icebox Nugget. And we just hope that the public awareness of this will create a new band of cheerleaders for us to get the word out to your neighbors, to your friends across the country, that this is something spectacular to bid on, and it's a piece of history who wouldn't want to own. So, thank you so much.
I looked inside there. I took the liberty of looking in the menu, and it's at the highest resolution. I set it up to his eyes. I didn't know what it was. It was online, because I had Jim call me. He called me over at my office, and I looked online at the model, and it looks like it's 1920. Was it by 10?
I better have. Okay. I guess Mayor asked me what the starting bid's going to be, and that kind of put me on the spot because Trevor and I have committed to opening up the bidding for this nugget on September 22 at $25,000. But we don't want to be the ones to own it. We want somebody with lots more money than us to own this, okay? Thank you so much.
Well, I kept it for that, but I do thank you for that.
Johnny Nugget here in our presence. And on that note, I just want to mention that my wife's grandmother, who's originally from Lead, she passed away 10 years ago. She was 100 years old. Marguerite King, and she remembered Potato Creek Johnny well. And I remember her describing him as goofy. Sounds like he was. But anyway, we really appreciate Chris Johnson and your generosity and your efforts to not only preserve Black Hills history, but also to provide support for these two important programs. Thank you. Our next order of business is item number, is the non-public hearing items, items six through 67. Can we have a motion to open public comment on six through 53? I do have a couple of speaker requests, three speaker request forms so far, and they're all for item 41, so we do not have any general public comment items. So, all in favor of opening public comment, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on items six through 53, and we have three speaker request forms, and we'll first go to Ed McLaughlin, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It brings back a lot of memories here, and I'm delighted to be here. Speaking of Potato Creek Johnny, I also had the opportunity to know Potato Creek, and during the '40s, he used to participate in the Days of '76 parade. So, as most of you may realize, Johnny was about 5'8" or so, so he was not a big man, but he wore little horn-rimmed glasses and was always there for the parades. The thing I wanted to speak with you tonight is about the Civic Center. I applaud the leadership of the council for coming out and indicating that you do not plan to be reneging on some of the proposals and projects that you have thus far committed to. As most of you know, and if you've read the Journal in the last few days and so on, there have been about 67 projects that have been funded or supported by the work of the Vision 2012, or the Vision Fund it is now known as. I would like to just take a moment and describe a little bit how it was started. Grace Michelson, one of the council members, is in the room here that helped work on this, but it was started with the idea of providing an opportunity to improve the community through many, many different aspects. We had a problem quite often of a project come forward, and then it didn't receive unanimous support and would be voted down. And part of the reason for the 2012 was a collective ad putting forth a number of projects to build constituency... to build constituencies throughout the entire community. And by so doing, this was passed by an initiated major, taken on by the council. It was not referred at that point. We took it deliberately after the Civic Center was paid for. We took the half-cent proposal to the people and had many, many hearings, discussions, and it was passed by a narrow margin. And I think that was in 93. And then in 95, there was an action known as a referred major, which means that the public questioned whether or not this was a good use of funds. And that was referred to the public. And at that time, about 74% concurred with the council action and supported the 2012. My concern on it is I applaud the efforts of the council in taking the lead to support a growing community and keeping up with and improving the Civic Center, which most of you realize the Vision 2012 has already funded about three or four aspects of the existing Civic Center. It's almost double the original size, and a lot of that funding came right from the Vision 2012. My concern is, I think that the public needs to buy in to the project. I don't want to see it fail, but I would like to see all of the information out there, have the public vote on it, but separate it in such a manner so that whenever action is taken, it does not sink the entire 2012 funding if that is not approved. So I applaud your efforts, and I wish you well on it. I think it's important that the public buy in on this in the final analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the next speaker request form is from Malcolm Chapman. Good evening, Malcolm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. First of all, let me say thanks to Mayor McLaughlin for his leadership and his vision and that particular city council years ago, and thinking about what the future could look like. And that has come to fruition over 67 projects in 20 some odd years. And all the councils and all the citizens of this community's worked on that. Let me thank this council and the mayor for actively listening to what you're hearing from this side of the dais, and I appreciate that. And I say actively listening because I want you to not just hear what I'm saying, but feel what I'm saying. I was here the other night for the special council meeting, or the vision meeting, and I heard what the council was talking about doing. And I spoke against that at the legal and finance meeting the next day, or on Wednesday. I don't disagree with the spirit of what was proposed, but it's not only important in terms of what we do, but it's really important in terms of how we do it. I would be proud to live in a community that housed the facility that the Civic Center proposed the other day. I think it was an impressive presentation, but that's not the question. The question for me is, how do we get there? And 2012, where the vision committee is now one of the most public processes that we use in this community. And to date, only two people have spoken from the public side in front of you as an elected body, Mayor McLaughlin just recently, and then myself tonight and on Wednesday. This process is so public that it needs to be opened up into the entire public and have that discussion prior to the council, in my opinion, making any decision to talk about funding or design fees or any of that. The city, the citizens of Rapid City deserve the right to weigh in on that. There's already a process in place in terms of how we allocate 2012 funds or vision funds. My question for the council would be, why are we not using that process that's already codified in ordinance? And then what is the drive behind trying to create a new Civic Center so early in the process? We just approved a 2012 process or plan in 2010, and in ordinance it says every five years, a new plan will come about. We're in the middle of that. What is the hurry? What's the rush? I just ask the council, I ask you to make this process a very public process. Use the process that's already codified. And if that's not what you want to do, then change the process before you start to talk about design fees and those sorts of things. Those would be my comments. And again, I would just say, why, what's the driver for doing this so quickly and violating the ordinance that's already in place? And then consider and think about the larger community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. And we'll now go to Donovan Broberg on item 41. Mr. Broberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, at this time, I'd like to defer any comments to later time if needed to support more specific findings and thoughts and items that we've consulted with in supporting the Civic Center in the city and bringing information together for the proposed project.
Thank you. Would you not have any further speaker request forms on items six through 53? Did I miss anyone? Seen none, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got here late because I had to work tonight. And can I fill out a speaker request form?
Just your name for the record.
Ron Wyffenbach, I'm from Rapid City here. And I just got in at the end of Malcolm's time at the dais here, and I won't reiterate what he says, but I can't tell you from my heart how disappointed I was to see that process that took place. There's a process that is in place that's public. You're talking $125 million to $150 million to build the Civic Center. I'm not against looking at the options to do it, but I think there is a process in place that works. Also, I don't know if any of you have taken the time to drive up and down my road lately, but man, we got about $50 to $60 million worth of infrastructure improvements on the roads just to break even in our city. And we're looking at a $125 to $150 million project that we don't even know what the numbers are. I would challenge most of the council here to even understand the finances of the Civic Center. I'm sure there's maybe just a few of you that really completely understand how that piece works. And then we're gonna add another, what is it, 18,000 square feet at $150 million bucks to get a concert that I'm not sure that this city can sustain. But the other fact that I wanted to bring forward is the fact that we have about $50 to $60 million worth of roads. If any one of you want to drive up and down my road, make sure you wear your seatbelt real tightly. The other day, I think there was an article in the paper, I think Public Works Director or somebody, maybe the Water Department fellow was quoted in there because there was a water main break. Just a slight extra pressure on the water main cost, 12 water breaks in South Rapid, 12 of them. And it's not the first time it happens. It happens every year. We've got a city that's rotting from the inside out like a tree, from the inside out. Now we're looking at putting in $150 million to 20 to 30 years in a 2012 project that wasn't even vetted, the public doesn't even know about. I still have the underlying question, what's driving it? Who's driving it? Why is it be driven? I mean, if you read on the information that they're talking about with big public concerts right now, you'll understand that most of them are down 15%, and they're all looking for smaller venues to operate in. So, these are some things that the public would like to input on. I think there's a process in place. I won't go into what Malcolm Chapman said, but just to reiterate the facts that there is a process in place, no ordinance needs to be changed. Let's look at it. Let's get the input. Because I think there's a lot of citizens in our community right now that would see an opportunity to take some of this 2012 money in the future and put it towards just getting us on the front end of the curve of fixing the infrastructure we already have before we start adding another stress level to it. So I'd just like to ask the council to reconsider this, slow it down, get the public's input, and see what other options are available. Look at doing what the city council and the administration is vetted with doing. And that's taking care of water, streets, sewer. A lot of the same thing every one of you guys ran on. If I went and picked up all your literature, you all ran on it, but I haven't seen anything from it yet. So, let's look at it again. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Any further speaker requests on this item? Seen none, do we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Doyle, second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items six through 53. We'll pull item 41. Are there any other items to be pulled? We'll go to Jerry Wright. Already pulled. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number 18, please.
Number 26, please.
Steve.
Number 12 and 21. Mayor, if you will, please.
We have so far 12, 18, 21, 26, and 41. Did I miss any? Seen none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle to approve items six through 53 with the exception of 12, 18, 21, 26, and 41. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are on item number 12, and we'll go to our new Public Works Chairman, Jerry Wright.
Item Public Works 071012-8, authorize staff to advertise for bids for South Valley Drive Extension, project number ST11-1960, CIP number 50886, an estimated cost of $250,000.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti, and we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to pull this from the agenda purely just to welcome the people on the south end of South Valley Drive to Rapid City. They're gonna have to not drive all the way up South Valley Drive north to get into the city of Rapid City. Granted, they've been annexed, but it's a long drive if you've ever been down that way. So, this extension over to the bypass is gonna be great for those citizens of Ward Two, and I just want to applaud the effort to get this done, and I'm sure they're looking forward to it getting completed as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd like to say thank you to you and Richie especially for your support of this. There's some discussions ongoing with Rapid City Police Department because this will probably become one of the most popular cut acrosses in town once this extension is complete. So that's something that we'll need to take a look at in terms of the speed limits and the signage down in that area. So, any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to authorize going out for bids. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 18. Jerry.
It's number PW071012-13, authorize finance officer to call the current .16 utility support fund bond, series 2005 revenue bond, and up on next available call date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like this item to be continued so I could have a companion resolution to actually defuse the bonds. And in brief, that is just putting money aside to have it available upon the call date, so...
The next counts me. The motion is by Doyle and a second by Nordstrom to continue the next city counts me. Any further discussion? Seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 21. Jerry.
Thank you. It's number PW052912-12, request the mayor to authorize staff to develop an ordinance and drainage fee structure for proceeding with a drainage utility. And I yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? I can't make motions anymore. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion through.
We have a motion by Jerry and a second by Richie, and we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you will, I'd like to make a substitute motion. And then I'd like to explain, if I can get a second, I'll explain if I can do that.
Well, you don't have a motion yet.
My substitute motion is to separate the, and I know this is the very beginnings of this, but I want to separate the fee structure that's proposed to support this, that the taxpayers will be, as it's proposed, funded through property taxes. And I want to make sure that we vote on that separately, just like we are going to for tax increases when we come to the budget in August and September. And so, I want to make sure that we're all on the record as saying we support the utility separately, and that if you're supporting the increase in fees to the taxpayers, that you do that separately so that we all can say that we voted for those separately, and that we won't say that we have leeway that says, "I voted for the utility, but not the increased fees to the taxpayers." So I'd like to see those separately as separate ordinances.
So your motion is to divide this...
Separate the two. Yep. To separate the two into two ordinances.
Divide this into the utility and then...
The fee structure that would go to the taxpayers, if I can do that.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a second by Doyle for discussion. Everyone understands the motion? Go to Jerry Wright for discussion.
Clarification, I believe this is a fee, not a property tax item. Is that correct?
Terry.
So there's a difference between a fee and a property tax, technically.
Technically, that's correct. It's actually, and it would be an assessment that's assessed to the property, it's collected at the time of the taxes. If I could maybe explain real briefly, I think the intent of Alderman Laurenti, I think would be accomplished by what we're doing here. Technically, the ordinance just sets out the, I don't wanna say the rate, it's basically the formula that we use to calculate the assessments. By a separate resolution, that is where we would apply the unit charge. The unit charge is what really calculates the total dollar figure that's gonna be collected. So, there is gonna be two separate items that would ultimately come forward. One is the ordinance that sets the utility up. There'll be a separate resolution that would need to be approved that will establish the unit charge. Hopefully that helps out.
Steve.
Well, I'm a little confused.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Jerry still has the floor, and then we'll come back to you.
A comparison, I saw some heads nodding it's a tax. I just want to clarify, it's not the tax in the pure sense in a property tax assessment on property valuation. It's similar to a fee that we have for water, wastewater, or street maintenance if it were done. It's based on a cost. It's a payment by the public, no question about that, but it's not technically a tax. And the rates would be set similar to what we do with water, wastewater, garbage, and so forth. They'd be voted upon by the elected body, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm done.
We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
I'm a little confused because we have the language for the fee structure in this ordinance, so I'm a little confused about that. I'm not confused about the fact that it's a fee, but it's going to be collected. If my understanding is correct, definitely correct me if I'm wrong, but it will be assessed and collected through the property tax. Am I correct on that? Terry, if you can clarify that.
It's payable to the county at the same time that you pay your property taxes, but it is, it's not technically a property tax, but it is a charge. It's charged to citizens, there's no doubt about that. It's similar to if we were to do a street assessment or a water or sewer assessment, those assessment charges are filed at the county, and they collect those fees, those charges, along with county taxes and city taxes.
And I just want to be clear that, and for my colleagues as well, just so that we all understand, that these will be voted on separately, that we're all gonna be on record as voting for the fee increase separately from creating the utility for the drainage. Is that correct?
That's correct. You could technically approve the ordinance and have the utility fund created, but until you approve a corresponding resolution that establishes the unit charge, there's gonna be no revenue. So you are correct there.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it, Terry.
Terry, this would be similar then to the way it was structured for the planning department fees and also for the landfill fees. We had an ordinance, and then we had a separate resolution or ordinance come forward, one or the other, to set the actual fees. We've done this with other funds.
Correct. And I just, and again, the reason I bring this up, Mr. Mayor, is I do support the creation of the utility. And what I want to make sure though is that all of us are on record here as, because there's separate issues in my opinion. The utility can be created because I know it's going to facilitate better government for us, especially where it opens up our ability to use some funds that we aren't right now for the drainage projects, because it's based on the basins. And I talked to Terry a little bit about this, and this way we can use all of those funds... and this way we can use all of those funds for the entire city with the utility created. But for the taxpayers, whether you call it a fee or a tax, and it's being collected through property taxes, and I understand it's different, that it is a fee, and I'm not trying to say that it is a tax, but the fact of the matter is it's an increase in the cost to the taxpayer, and they're gonna have to pay this out of their pocket, and we should all be on the record on that particular issue alone, separate from the utility, and it sounds like we will, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Would you not have any further speaker requests on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number forty-one. Amanda Scott, our legal finance chair, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Item twenty-six. I apologize, Amanda. Item twenty-six. Jerry?
It's item PW zero-seven, ten, twelve, dash, twenty-two, authorize the submittal of a grant application to the Gwendolyn L. Sterns Foundation, and I yield the floor.
Richie?
Mayor, this item came up at the last Public Works Committee meeting, and we didn't have enough supporting information, and if Lon is in the forward... In the room, I'd like to ask him to come forward to give us a little explanation of what this item is. Thank you. Lon, could you give us a little bit of insight of what we have for information in front of us?
I certainly can. Mr. Mayor, Richie, members of the council, this is a grant application proposed by the Beautification Committee. The Gwendolyn Sterns Foundation has been a very benevolent benefactor of the city, and we've received a lot of money through this foundation for beautification in Rapid City. This particular project that Beautification Committee is proposing is to add some additional landscaping along Omaha Street to meet the Omaha Street Corridor beautification, and this will include the area east of Hubbard Mill, between Hubbard Mill and the railroad tracks, and will include some landscaping in that area. Through the foundation, we've received up to twenty-five thousand dollars for plant material for some of our projects.
Mayor, if it's all right, I'll make the motion to authorize the submittal of the grant application.
Okay, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lon. We are now on item forty-one. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-one, number CCO seven oh nine one zero dash zero one, request the mayor to authorize staff to look at and bring forward funding options for the design of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Expansion Project, and to bring forward any necessary ordinance changes, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment, if it's okay, to clarify a few things, and then we can go on for further discussion, if that's all right. First of all, I want to say I really appreciate the discussion over the last week, and I also want to emphasize that this has been an ongoing discussion in varying levels of intensity for the last twenty-two years, ever since the passage of the Americans with Disability Act, or ADA. I misspoke last week when I said to the Journal that I supported the project. I used the word "the project," and I... By using that term, I inadvertently applied that there was a complete set of architectural plans, and decided on size, and I apologize for that confusion. A hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty million dollars and fifteen to twenty thousand seats isn't a project, it's a vision, and I should've said I supported the vision, because until the numbers are penciled out and the needed policy changes are identified, this is not a defined project, and it would be unfair to characterize this as shovel-ready. The Vision Fund Committee is a recommending body to another recommending body, Legal and Finance, which is a recommending body to the council. The premise for this vision is not to bring in Lady Gaga. The premise for the vision, for this discussion, for me, anyway, is two things: the lack of parking, which has firmly been established, and the ADA and accessibility issues, which I will take a moment to discuss. ADA does not require immediate compliance. It doesn't require tear down and start over. It doesn't require a fifteen to twenty thousand seat arena or a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty million dollar expenditure, but ADA does require a plan. I think it's risky for our city to be subjected to a lawsuit and then for it to be up to a federal jury to decide if twenty-two years and no plan, other than a two thousand and three study, amounts to an adequate plan. The last time this was seriously looked at was in two thousand and three, when a study showed a thirty-six million dollar estimate for ADA improvements alone. Can't find the minutes of that discussion, but I believe that was... It was presented when Malcolm and I were both freshmen on the city council. The arena would be down for twenty-two months, and that didn't include the code requirements for the roof, another estimated twenty million dollars or more, and no parking issues would be addressed. In addition, the arena itself is outdated in a multitude of other ways, including hundreds of feet of CAT one communication cabling. Those of us phone company guys in the room know how old CAT one cabling is, inadequate venting, et cetera. I also want to say I believe that this should be voted on by the people as an initiated measure. This is keeping in the spirit of the past several votes for the Vision Fund, especially the early nineteen-nineties vote nineteen ninety-three, which was an initiated measure that was championed by civic leaders. I suggest approving this motion on the floor for the numbers to continue to be penciled out, and for the list of policy changes to be identified and brought forward to an upcoming Legal and Finance meeting for discussion. There are a number of referable items: the architect selection and design, the bond itself, and the ordinance change. The council can then offer a motion that they feel an initiated measure is the appropriate course of action, and then it will be up to us as individuals to circulate petitions and attempt to get this on the ballot before a vote. We've already established the importance of the existing arena, and we've established that doing nothing isn't a viable option. We've also established that we are... We have been spending significant amounts on other infrastructure, the other infrastructure that we all so care about, and we all talk about so much, including a twenty-two million dollar bond that's in the works for the Point One Six Fund to address, among other things, this existing infrastructure. At a minimum, we are looking at thirty-six million dollars of ADA improvements for the Civic Center, at a minimum, plus the loss of the arena for twenty-two months, if we would do that. Now, that's based on the two thousand and three estimate. Again, this is a vision. We're not... We are in the early stages, and we are not asking for approval of funding tonight. We're asking for the vision to be developed and focused, and then for the council to support recommending an initiated measure similar to nineteen ninety-three. Those are my comments at this time, and now we'll go to Councilites.
Jerry?
For the record, I wasn't here Monday night. I was in Washington, D.C. on a Veterans Fair issue. I was unable to discuss or be involved with this, and I'm surprised these comments that you just made were not made that Monday night, were they? Did you make the same comments Monday night? I'm sorry, I wasn't there.
Last Monday, no, it was a...
Okay, thank you. But I must express my very deep concern about the very rapid, almost instantaneous approval of the Civic Center project, and although I support the Civic Center, and they know that, this community knows that, I believe we're proceeding too fast, and I recommend we slow down. It almost appears we got married after the first date. I asked for discernment in a financial impact analysis of the council action to proceed, and my reasons are as follows, and I'm sure there are others that can be added. One, the Vision Fund, as I understand the proposal and discussion and funding, will be consumed for many years, and leaves the city without its minimal funding for infrastructure improvements. By recent estimates and statements that we have received as a council, the city of Rapid City is approximately one hundred and forty million dollars short in funding, current estimate, badly-needed drainage infrastructure that we've been waiting and waiting and waiting to fix. We are based on other estimates, a minimum, in my estimate, five million short for maintenance and repair of our streets. There are several large city buildings, such as City Hall, Doll Center, library, fire halls, all will need significant infrastructure in the years. We need a full analysis of all of our capital infrastructure needs. We need to include the current and needed funds and sources of the revenues, not only to pay and build, but to maintain and operate, and we need to prioritize, and I agree with Ron totally. I think we have streets that are almost dusted. We have streets that are in terrible shape, and it's high time the city of Rapid City makes that a priority to include our drainage. It's time we do it, and I think we sit back and look at what we can do with what we have, and tied in with our just discussion on the drainage, there are ways we can do it, but I don't want to see us coming up and say we're gonna do this without looking at everything, and we're gonna have to look at probably some additional sources of revenue to meet all those needs, but for God's sakes, let's put together a program together that meets those needs, instead of starting on one thing and abandoning all those things that many people sitting on this dais campaigned for last year. I think the word was "infrastructure." Let us not neglect our commitment and what we said, and let's do what's right. Thank you. Oh, by the way, one of my heroes, Andy Griffith, passed away, and I think he would've said, "I think it's time to go down to Gruber Station and have a soda pop and talk about this." I think it's time we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, and we'll go to Chad Lewis. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, I feel like a lot of the blame for this lands my shoulders firmly. I... It was the first time I've ever been in a vision committee. Vision committee does not obviously approve the... They just approve the process going forward. I'm very enthusiastic about this idea. I think it's a great idea for the city of Rapid City. I'm gonna support it going forward as well, you know, as long as it's feasible, but I obviously misspoke when I said funding. I meant, you know, Brian had asked us if we could... Permission to move forward with the project, and I said I'm gonna do that, and then I must've said, "Oh, fund it." I didn't mean it in that regard. I assumed everybody kinda knew what I was talking about. I must... I need to be a little clearer, obviously, but it was never intended... I mean, this... It was actually the first time I ever saw the project as well. I was just excited about the idea. I think we should move forward and continue on this project, so there was no, you know, underhanded thing going on, or no one trying to push the deal forward behind everybody's back. It was never in that intention. I don't believe that for a second anybody had that belief. Like I said, overly enthusiastic perhaps, but, you know, obviously you don't just push a hundred and fifty million dollar project through in one meeting. That doesn't happen, and I think everybody realizes that. I at least hope they do, and I just firmly believe this is something we need for the twenty-first century in Rapid City. I think this is something we need to work on. These kind of projects are great ideas. Of course, infrastructure is something we need to take care of as well, but, you know, the idea was, they would ask for permission to keep moving forward with this proposal. There was no... They didn't say, "Please fund this tonight." That was never... I don't think anybody's intention. I misspoke. I apologize for that. You wanna take someone to the woodshed? Do it to me. I'm married, I can take it. But by all means, I don't think there was any malicious intent here, or anything trying to... Anybody trying to hide anything. I don't believe that for a second. I think everybody's very honorable that sits up here. They do their best to do what they believe in, and I don't think this is going on, you know, behind closed doors to push it behind, to get it out of the way of the public. I think, obviously, it was always gonna be part of the public, it's always gonna be part of this project, part of the process. There's no way... I mean, you can't approve something like that without the public's input. We all know that. Once again, put it on me, I'll take it. I will be on the record, however, still stating I'm very much for the idea and the project, so, thank you.
Chad, and we'll go to Steve Laurenti. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I... And I... Again, I'm not gonna speak for everybody on the council that I was there and voted as well, and I know that I voted to support the concept that was presented to us, and that was it, and I think anybody who's served on the council knows we have a long way to go before... And we all know that the public is going to be involved with this process intimately, and I don't think any one of us thought that we were gonna circumvent that process, so I don't quite understand the tack that some are taking, but that's theirs. But the fact of the matter is, what I'd like to talk about, too, is Chad Lewis's... I should say Alderman Lewis's. I checked before the meeting, he's a little wet behind the ears still. I noticed that, but so am I, so what am I gonna say? But I had to say that, Chad, so... But what I wanted to do, and this kinda dovetails with what I brought up earlier about Public Works and the fact of the matter is how the utility is gonna possibly free up some funds, and I'm just gonna let Terry speak about that, because I think it dovetails with this. Mr. Mayor, if you allow me the latitude to allow him to do that, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Terry, if you can, please.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kinda taking a little step back here. With the previous action you guys took on the... Two things. There were on the agenda previously. One was drainage utility, and the other was the bonding for the Point One Six Utility Fund. Those are gonna bring in potentially some substantial revenues for additional projects, and at the next Public Works meeting, I'll bring forward an updated infrastructure spreadsheet that'll show the annual expenditures for the next five years out for infrastructure. We will for sure see an increase with the bond approval on the Point One Six Fund, and I will also plug in some proposed infrastructure increases with the drainage utility, so you can see how that will work, so that we definitely do see some light at the end of the tunnel regarding some infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it.
We do not have a motion on the floor. We'll next go to Ron Sasso.
I was here Monday. I voted yes, and I slept at night. One of the things I think that want to clarify in the presentation and what we discussed was also that the infrastructure portion of twenty-twelve was not going to be tapped into. I believe that is one of the things that we were looking at, that that piece was not going to be touched, just to clarify, because I believe that is important. Looking at... Looking at what we did on Monday night, again, I agree with everyone. I think we were looking... We're looking at a vision. We're starting this process. I looked at our notes, and it said we approve funding, which probably would not be the correct thing for us to do based on ordinances. However, it is a project that I think we all support. We do need more information on, and I believe we are getting that. There will be a town hall meeting in Ward Five on next Monday at seven o'clock at Black Hills Works, and I believe we will also have some information on the Civic Center and be soliciting feedback from citizens at that time. More information, the better, but I do believe when we look at where Rapid City is headed and what our goals are, looking at down the road of having a larger Civic Center, having the parking that we need, that everybody on this dais has heard, is a concern. I do believe this is a project that likely will move to the front, ahead of some of the other projects that are... That haven't come forward yet, and I say that, that haven't... Have not come forward yet. The other aspect that I believe we have to... That we will need to look at is when we look at those sales tax dollars, the revenue, that economic impact of a project like this, how much more money will be generated for the Vision Fund in the future, because that will be a piece of what this does, and I believe that is something that will benefit all of Rapid City, including the Vision Fund in the long run, so, thank you.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom, and we do not have a motion on the floor.
Do I take that as a hint, Mayor? Let me go back and see if I can get the motion correctly here for you. Request the mayor... Move to request the mayor to authorize staff to look and bring forward funding options for the design of Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Expansion, and to bring forward any necessary ordinance changes. If that's all right, I'll make that a motion. I'd like to retain the floor.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Lewis, and Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly welcome to support any amendments to this motion, but I'm pleasantly pleased to hear...
to hear that government's moving so fast on an issue, because I don't, this would be my first time seeing government moving this fast on any issue at all. And I take the admonishment from former Mayor McLaughlin, Malcolm Chapman, and also former Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, as serious admonishments. They should be taken seriously. The, the, the thing of it is that, correct me, Mayor, and I'll address this first question to you, is that this Vision Fund Committee meeting last Monday night was just a recommending body, correct?
That's correct.
And then also, if I'm understanding, the motion at that time was, there was a motion to just proceed on the, on the motion, but there was no date set on it? There was no specific amount to be set on it at that time? Am I correct?
My understanding, Richie, is that the motion was to proceed with funding. What the motion should have been is the motion that's in front of us tonight that has since been clarified.
I just wanted to be clear that on Monday night, that, that is not, that is only a recommendation from that body, which is a recommendation that goes to the legal and finance. Am I understanding that all correctly? Simply a recommendation at that point?
Yes.
Thank you. So, so at this time, what we're doing is taking what the legal and finance is going to be recommending to us, the full council, at a future unnamed or undated time. Am I understanding that correctly? We don't have a date in front of us as when we're going to be voting on this. Am I correct?
We would be voting, if this motion passes tonight, what's, what happens then is the mayor is authorized to ask staff to look, look at and bring forward the funding options to a future committee meeting.
So if I'm understanding every-
No, there's no funding being authorized tonight.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that we don't have a date, we don't have a time, we don't have a, a, a specific fund amount that's set in front of us, correct? Am I stating that all correctly?
No.
I just want to be clear what I'm making my motion and what I'm voting on.
Correct.
And then as far as government moving fast on, on an issue, this will be my first time seeing this particular incident take place. And I'm not seeing this as a, as a fast, fast-track event. So, Mayor, if I, if it's all right with you, I'll, I'm going to be, as long as I made that motion, I'm going to be supporting it wholeheartedly unless there's some substitute motions to maybe aid to that. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie, and we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm still kind of giggling over government moving fast. I don't know if you guys remember the Sign Code discussions or Duck Poop, but certainly wasn't a fast debate. You know, it kind of makes me sad that we're, there's such a conspiratorial tone. Again, if you watch the, the procedures that we have, nothing can move faster. So many checks and balances put in place for a very good reason, and I think it's important to keep note of that or keep, be mindful of that. It's the Civic Center. It's not like we could hide it. It's, it's a pretty big facility for Rapid City. And, you know, the way I look at Monday's Vision Fund meeting was the launch of the idea. Now the idea's out there, now we go through all the hurdles and the public input and everything we have to go through to vet it from every angle, weigh all that information and see what we have. What the mayor's recommending tonight is simply to start looking at numbers. We may find that the whole project's not even feasible and that the discussion's not warranted whatsoever. So I think it's, it's, again, worth keep, being mindful of that. I do have some questions for Brian and/or Donovan, if I may.
Please.
Donovan is the architect that came up with the preliminary design, and Brian Molesky, of course, the general manager of the Civic Center. You guys want to come up? You can tag team. And then one quick question for Pauline while they're approaching. Can you give me a ballpark, when you're ready, of 18% of the general fund? Thank you. Brian or Donovan, probably Brian, the, the question is, why would we get the ball rolling now midstream in this five-year plan versus waiting till the next round of Vision, which would begin in 2015?
Brian Molesky, General Manager of Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. One of the ideas behind this is it takes a while, and I agree that government takes a little bit of time to move forward. We need to get this out in front of people so that you can look at it, you can make your decisions. One of the biggest issues we run into currently is that we are having a hard time in actually producing some of the bigger acts inside of the Barnett Arena. Its time has come around full circle. It's not quite capable of doing many of the things that we ask it to do. And also the ADA issues. And our ADA issues run the full gambit, from not having any ADA seats actually in the balcony, to not having ADA restrooms, to having issues with our roof and the snow load factors. It's many, many fold. It's my job to bring to the council any potential large issues, and these are large issues. Again, in our industry, we've seen quite a few lawsuits brought about by ADA, brought in by individuals who have ADA needs that are not being met by a community, by a facility, by a business, by a government.
Thank you. And do you have any idea, I know we keep talking about this decade-old, 36 million. We revisited that, I believe, within the last five months perhaps? Do you know what all that would entail? Not just the, the loss of business for having the Barnett out of commission for two years, but the roof, all the ADA requirements, everything we would have to do to make that structure viable, keeping in mind that we would lose seating?
Just a list of those things?
Yeah.
Okay. We're looking at the number, the issues that we do have, the things that are not ADA compliant? Is that what you're asking? We currently have 18 ADA seats that we have that are not actually ADA compliant because they're reached by an elevator that is not ADA compliant. We need to have somewhere between 70 and 75 ADA seats, plus between 70 and 75 companion seats. We have 18. Our aisle widths are an issue up in our balcony. We do not have railing in the balcony. Quite honestly, if somebody trips at the level, at the top level, rows 30, 28, 27, and they start to tumble, they're going to stop when somebody in front of them is able to stop them. There is no railing there. We don't have elevators that are ADA compliant to take you to the second level. We can seat up to six, over 6,000 people in the balcony level. We have one elevator to that. It's in one corner. Quite honestly, we need to have multiple elevators. What we were told back years ago was probably three to four elevators to take you to those levels, especially if you were to put ADA seating in place, which we do not currently have. ADA restrooms, we've tried to make ADA restrooms downstairs. Actually, Donovan was a part of a project back in the mid-2000s where we added a set of restrooms upstairs. We have nothing on the floor that's ADA compliant. We don't have the ADA needs to get inside of the actual structure or to actually get inside of the stalls. We actually lack the sheer number of restrooms we're supposed to have for facility our size, especially on the female restroom side. We don't have true ADA ingress, egress doors within the Barnett Arena within a vestibule. We do not have ADA-accessible locker rooms, shower stall, stalls or lockers. Obviously, depending on the event that you have, you will have people that actually need to use your locker rooms that have ADA needs. We don't have those capabilities. We don't have ADA accessibility to the backstage. Unfortunately for us, when Elton John was here, he was unable to go upstairs, so we could not take him upstairs to the star dressing rooms, and we housed him in Locker Room B down where the boys' basketball teams play. We have the roof itself. We've been told if we, if we dig into the Barnett Arena, we no longer meet the modern snow code, or the, the modern codes for snow load requirements within the roof. The roof itself, we've had to turn away walking with dinosaurs, Batman Returns, some of those types of shows, because the grid system in which we hang our weights does not extend the full length. So we've had some issues with trying to hang some of the shows there. We've increased the amount of amperages, the number of transformers within the Barnett Arena twice to get our electrical, tried to bring up our electrical possibilities, electrical options. We just can't get enough into there right now. We've got insufficient lighting within the arena. We can't do blackouts, which is required or asked of most shows. If you've been to a hockey game, you'll know what a blackout is, how those things work. We don't have sound coverages throughout the facility. As the mayor said, our, our technology, a good portion of it, not all of it, but a good portion of it predates the first IBM PC computer. We have a thousand pair of Cat One, Category One phone lines in there that are mostly useless for any of our modern telephones, telecommunications, and certainly for the internet. We have a lack of voice evac system, which is connected into the alarm system and to the fire alarm system within the rest of the arena. And I know I've got, there's, there's many more that, that are out there. Those are the ones that I'm aware of.
Thank you. I was really trying to get an idea more of numbers, but you did a very thorough job of answering me. And I, I remember discussions when, before you really started getting excited about the prospect of, of doing something like this. And I want to say that with all the ADA compliance measures, as well as the roof, as well as the loss of use of the Barnett Arena for two years approximately, it was hitting the ballpark of $60 million. Is that, is that close? Is that safe to say?
That's, that's the conversation we've had. I don't have that written down in a, in a study. I don't have that in something to present to you. That's some of the discussions we had back in '03 and '04, when we looked at, do we simply remodel the Barnett Arena and try to find some ICE? How do we get a hockey team in there? How do we start doing, go back to doing Disney and ICE and those types of shows in there? We started with, okay, how do we get ICE in there? And then it, it got into the point of, okay, if you're going to dig into the ICE, you're going to have to look at all these other requirements that you don't meet, that you're not up to code on, that you're, you don't meet the federal requirements on. And the process at that time was, if you're going to dig into this, you need to correct everything. And it lists some of those things. Donovan probably knows more. That is not my area of expertise. But what we were told at that time is it started in the low 30 millions and it went north. And that did not include, what do you do with the Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo? What do you do with the state basketball tournament? What do you do with the powwow? What do you do with the kids' fairs? All those other events. Certainly, we have an ICE arena. We can do some events in there. We can't do the majority of those events I just listed.
Okay, and the idea that you have, should this new arena ever break ground, is to continue filling the Barnett Arena with as much as will come here, so that we, we're not having any, any downtime.
That was the biggest thing that really came about in the last go-around, is where do we put all those things for two years? And you can say, "Well, they'll just wait for two years." They might, and they, and they might just simply find another home, they might go to another community, and you might not get them back. What do we do with, with all these events and the economic impact it has on the community when they are not here? The economic impact goes far beyond the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. If you go downtown after one of the hockey games is over, there's a lot of stuff going on. If you go to one of our retail stores, or you go to one of the hotels during the LNI or during the state basketball tournaments, there's a lot going on. And those really didn't transpire into figuring out how many dollars would be lost by the community if we were to close the Barnett Arena and remodel it. And the idea with the new concept is while the new facility is being built, after the two parking garages hopefully are started and operational, while the new arena's being built, we would like to keep going in the Barnett Arena with everything that we are currently doing. Once the new arena's functional, once the parking is, is finished, then we would go into the Barnett Arena, move those events over into the new arena, and look at repurposing the Barnett Arena.
Thank you. And then Donovan, have you seen any other projects? Or do you have anything to compare it with, with a facility of this age where, you know, I mean, because if the numbers are right, you know, we, that 120 million estimate versus the 60 million estimate, is it reasonable to say that if, with a facility that age, it's going to cost about half of what it would to replace and add the parking? Or, you know, I'm just wondering if you've seen anything similar to this?
Well, I think it's been looked at several times over the last decade plus. You know, in, in the 2004 era, several firms looked at how to upgrade the existing facility, the existing Don Barnett Arena, and it ultimately led to, it's a very difficult, challenging prospect of making the, the upgrades necessary within that facility. And at that time, it led to the, the future new ICE arena, which is a much smaller venue, but it facilitates the things that were necessary. You're now back to the same set of conditions. How do we, how do we provide for those things? And I think we've seen that throughout the area, that there's, throughout the region, that many facilities are, are upgraded. You know, you're looking at a 35 to 40-year-old facility, and the, not only the ADA requirements, those, those things are 20 years old, but the technology, it's this layer and layer of trying to put new into old. And, and the old, the old skin, the old structure is very non-accommodating, so it really adds up very quickly.
Thank you, gentlemen. One last thing, it's, it's been said that the ADA lawsuit really is, for Rapid City, is not a matter of if, but when. And we heard some numbers today about judges ruling to the tune of 18% of general fund in these kinds of cases. I don't know what that number is.
Approximately $9 million.
$9 million. Just, just something for the public to think about. Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it.
And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor and staff to bring forth more information. That's basically the bottom line here. Call the question.
You're unable to call the question after you clarify the motion, so we will go to the next light. We'll go to John Roberts.
And that would have been the first time ever I'd fought calling the question. I want to thank Mr. McLaughlin and Ron and Malcolm for coming in here and speaking. Ron, or Malcolm, you look like you have something you want to say. Would you like to step up and say something?
I, I would, and I would ask some latitude. I understand the process that you go by, but I, I would graciously ask the council and the mayor to allow me to speak. I understand, I fully understand that from a compliance standpoint and from a competition standpoint and from a vision standpoint of what we're talking about with the Civic Center, and I fully support that. What I don't get, and what I do not understand, and what I have not heard this council discuss, is what is driving the process that we changed the 2012 process midstream? What's driving that process? These are not new ADA needs. If this were the case, why didn't we do this project with the 2010 round of 2012? Why didn't we do it then? Here we are midstream, and if nothing else, the outcome of anything is never fair. There are winners and there are losers, and you know that better than anyone. You ran for office. There's someone who won the council seat and someone who lost. But what I do not understand, and it's a loss to the remainder of our community if we do not, if you do not, create a fair process, what we are doing here is telling the Civic Center, and I'm not sure who asked the Civic Center to come here and put forth a project, put forth a vision, put forth a concept, but they have, and that's what's before us now. Let me ask you about the five meetings that I went to over the last month where organizations in this community are readying themselves to be prepared to come before you in 2015 to ask for 2012 funds. Will the process now be open for everyone else now? That's the fairness and the process that I'm talking about. It's not about taking some tact and saying that we shouldn't do the Civic Center and that concept is not important and those needs don't exist. I fully accept that, and I understand that. What I do not understand and what I have not heard from this council is why are we breaking the process that's already in place, that's codified in ordinance? And if the council chooses to break that ordinance, fine. That's fine, and the community will accept that. But you're saying, "Let's look for funding options," and then, the second part of that motion is then to say, "Oh, and let's change the process." Wrong answer, council. Wrong answer, council. Change the process. If you want to do 2012 every year, do 2012 every year and say that, and have every organization in this community ready themselves and come forward. Right now, another organization could not come forward, would you let the Affordable Housing Initiative, where we're talking about putting five coalitions together to do affordable housing in this community, can they come forth with a proposal, and be it Ron's Open House, or whatever, at over at Black Hill Works? Can they come and, will you listen to new ideas for this round of 2012? Or is this the only concept that you're going to listen to? The process has to be fair, and that's what I'm complaining, because you're saying that we're going to now invite the public so that they can make comments about the potential Civic Center. That's not what 2012 is about. 2012 is projects and ideas that come from the community, and then we as a community vet. The only project that we're going to have a conversation about is the Civic Center. We're not having a conversation about anything else. So I ask you again, to think about what you're doing. The outcome won't be fair, and I would support the Civic Center if it got funded. That's fine. But no one else can come forward because we're not listening to anything else. If someone else came forward next year and said, I have an idea for 2012, what do you tell them? Oh, I'm sorry, you have to wait till 2015? Or do you say, absolutely, you get to stand in line, but there's no money left? Or do they get to compete on par with the Civic Center, like 2012 has done in this community since its inception? And I appreciate the latitude that you've given me to come back and speak again. The process has to be fair, and that has to be driven by and for the public, not by you telling them to go to a meeting to talk about the Civic Center. That's not fair. That's not fair. So, thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. Now, after that, I'm going to sound not very intelligent. But I will tell you where I went last weekend on this. I went out and talked to a lot of my constituents. And a lot of people, if this is going to happen eventually, because we are in the very beginning of this, most people want to have the right to vote on it. And that was one of the main things that I ran on as a councilperson. I like the idea. I like the idea of upgrading the Civic Center. I really like it. The only problem is, what I want doesn't really make a lot of difference. What makes a lot of difference is what the people aboard for want, and a lot of the people I've talked to so far, at very minimum, want this to go to a vote. So, that's where I stand right now, and thank you.
We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Malcolm, for, for your comments. And I probably should try to clarify a little bit, when I talk about the town hall meeting and presentation of Civic Center information, I'm also looking at feedback. I'm looking at feedback on the Vision Fund. I'm looking at all of that. I look at, when I say my view of the Civic Center project is a little different, in that I'm looking at it on this, on the scale of the project itself. And, you're right, probably do need to be looking at, and also Mayor McLaughlin, same thing, looking at it from the standpoint of the Vision Fund. I also believe that it would make sense to find out where we stand, because we are in the middle of a round of 2012, and actually should say Vision Fund. And it would be good to know if this council is leaning in that direction, because even though there are recommendations, we still can change that midstream, as far as what the recommendation of the citizen body says, we still can turn around and say, okay, no, we want to fund this project instead of that. That's happened. Now, on a project this big, I do agree that it should be looked at as an initiated measure to get the full feedback. I do agree with that. That said, that is something that would need to come from the citizens. I don't know if it would be appropriate to direct city attorney to look at drafting an initiated measure, and whether or not there would be the support on this, but then we would have to circulate it as citizens. But I do believe this is a project that, when vetted, and we look at all the pluses and minuses of the project, I do think it's something that will take Rapid City further. That's all that I, I'm saying, and I, and I apologize if I came across a little strong or a little brash, that wasn't my intent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think fundamentally, we need, at issue here, is protecting the vision process. We have three leaders, previous leaders that spoke, and they know what we're looking at, and they're saying, take another look. Ultimately, the worst thing that can happen for this community is for us to lose the Vision Fund, because that would be very devastating. We're the envy of cities and states throughout the country because of our Vision Fund, because our previous leaders and our previous citizens voted to support it. I think that we can look at changes in the ordinance, we can look at considering waiting and just keeping the previous, the vision process in place, and let the Civic Center stand up against all the other projects. We could consider moving it up, if we think there's a hurry. We could consider having a vision process in 2013, or later this year, if we wanted to do that. I don't know about if this needs a vote of the people, but it certainly needs the input of the people. And I think we need to be very careful that we honor the vision, the process. We kind of got ahead of ourselves, and, as I said, we don't need Lady Gaga, because the council's already gone Gaga, but we need to really look at this and think about it, because, like I said, because it's very important. And I hope that someone will, I think we're basically talking about the same thing in this ordinance, because I believe our intention on this is to not really look at funding options, but more like a funding capability, to see if that's even possible. But we need to be very, very careful that we don't upset the vision process, because that would be devastating to our community, to have that happen. Thank you.
Now I'll go to Jerry Wright.
I guess to clarify, I'm not speaking to bypass 2012 or anything. Before I make a substitute motion, I do want to say this. It's imperative that we, as a city, as the council, as the mayor and staff and citizens, that we look at our entire system and analyze what we need to do, what it's going to cost, and how we can pay for it. We need to do that before we can make any intelligent decision of committing resources of this magnitude. I'm not speaking against Civic Center at all. So I'm going to suggest that we make a motion to the effect that we direct the mayor and staff to bring forward a financial analysis to include the cost of construction, operation, and funding sources of all the major infrastructure needs, to include the Civic Center, streets, drainage, buildings, and other items as identified to us by November 1, 2012.
Because you spoke already prior to offering the motion, that's something that you would need to come back and offer a motion on, unless the council would allow that. But in keeping with the spirit of how the meeting's been operated, that would, your councillors are unable to offer comments first before offering a motion. So we will go to Bill Clayton, and Jerry, you're welcome to get back in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very touchy subject, needless to say. We've read about it in the paper, we've seen and heard people speak eloquently tonight. It's interesting to me that for weeks before I took the seat up here on the dais, I came to council meetings, and I sat in one of those chairs where I had a wide-angle view of what happens up here. And now I sit up here where I have a wide-angle view of what happens out there. And I tend to be very cognizant of non-verbals, and one of the things that I see that troubles me is people taking sides and getting entrenched in a thought process. We have reporters on this side, we have a Rapid City Journal reporter over on that side, and they do fine jobs, fine jobs, of covering what happens here. But we sit here for protracted periods of time, there's a lot of discussion from a lot of wonderful people, well-intentioned people, and unfortunately, the coverage on the news, on the TV, is down to seconds, and the coverage in the newspaper is down to paragraphs. So those people in our city who gather their information from either the news, or the newspaper, or both, get accurate information, but it's never complete information, and it's certainly not enough information by which to formulate an opinion or a position. And I would ask, from the bottom of my heart, that those people who feel passionately pro or con about what we've spoken about tonight, check your gut at the door, and don't do this by gut feeling. And, and I agree with what Alderman Wright has said, we need to gather the facts. And I would implore everyone who has any sort of an opinion here, to listen, to study, and I have no doubt, from the people I've talked to and heard from, that this ultimately will go to a vote of the people. But I think for once, in the history of Rapid City, we need to have more than 20 percent at the polls, and we need to have people who make learned decisions, rather than a gut decision about who or what they do or don't like. So again, I just ask that all of us, you know, that includes all of us up here, all of you out there, and everyone who might read, watch, or somehow become involved, study, do your homework, and make an informed decision based on facts, and not just based on emotion. Thank you.
Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. And especially thank you for allowing me to speak a second time on this. I'm anticipating to hear Jerry Wright's motion on this, but I just kind of want to emphasize the current motion is that we're just, all we're doing is looking at options, we're not having anything set in concrete. And then, so we're just looking at these as options, so that we will have a process to decide which option we're going to choose. So we're definitely not fast-tracking that. And then, we're going to forward any changes, if, if necessary, to the ordinances. Again, that has to be decided by us, if we're going to make those changes. And perhaps there's even additional changes that we can take a look at. So again, we're definitely not fast-tracking this whole effort, because we'll be having the opportunity to look at all of these conditions and different contingencies that we can review. And Jerry's right, Alderman Wright is correct, is that there are other visions that are in the hopper, and they need to be examined. And with that being said, I think we need to be cognizant that we are looking at options, different contingencies, so we're definitely not fast-tracking everything. Thank you, Mayor. You'll go to the floor.
Thank you, once again, Mr. Mayor. And I like what Alderman Wright said about looking at the needs, and it's obvious that the Civic Center has some needs. So I think it's, we're trying to figure out all the needs that this city has, and look at what we, we have to, what we're tasked with within the coming years. So, there's nothing wrong with fleshing out these numbers right now, just to see, number one, is it even feasible? If it is feasible, and it's important to do within the current plan, then we do an ordinance change to change the process potentially. It may not be necessary, we don't know. I mean, again, I appreciate Mr. Chapman's fervor in what he said, but I think if we go and change the ordinance right now, we don't even know that this is viable. That would definitely be putting the cart before the horse, in my opinion. We flush out the numbers, we see if it's feasible, we see if it's, it's something that the council even wants to have further discussions on, and then we see what changes may be required. And then we either amend the plan, or wait till 2015 round, or whatever it's going to take. But to stop and make those changes now, not knowing that those changes are even going to fulfill a project that is still in question, or there's no hard numbers for us to look at, I think is, is a bit premature. You know what, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Lewis, and I've been trying to keep track here, Chad and Steve have each spoken once, they both have their light on, we'll go to them, and then we'll come back to Jerry. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't intending to speak again, but I've been sitting up here listening, and I'm thinking to myself, you know, we do need to be responsive, obviously, to our constituents, and I think we're doing that right now. We're having the conversation, we've all kind of tried to clarify our positions, and I very much appreciate that. I appreciate everybody bringing forth all their concerns, and that's, you know, ultimately a good thing, it's a good part of, part of the discussion, this is part of the whole process, as far as I'm concerned. But ultimately, we are elected to be leaders, and that's all we're doing right now, is we're trying to lead discussion, lead our city in a direction, and all we're doing is asking for the staff to bring forth options. We're not telling them to go out and build the thing, or design it, or anything else, it's simply to give us a set of options to vote for, or to decide if we like it, you know, if it's going to work, if it's even feasible. And I think at this point, I'm not a guy that backs down easily. I was wrong initially when I made my statement, I admit that, I said, I misstated my motion, but fact of the matter is, I'm 100% behind this project still. I think it's a great idea. If it doesn't work, if we look at the options, there's no funding for it, fine, then we can't do it, that's great, and I admit that, and we go on. But at this point, I think we're still, I'm not going to, I'm not going to run for the hills, because some people are upset about what was, how it went down. I don't think that's the right way. I don't think that's what I was elected to do. I'm not going to respond every single time someone says I'm wrong. I mean, I wouldn't be doing much in this world if I, I heard that, if I did that. And so, with that in mind, I'm going to support the motion, it's on the floor. I think it's a good idea to keep moving forward, to explore our options, see if it's even feasible. If it's not feasible, then great, then we go on somewhere else. But at this point, I was elected to make these kind of decisions, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say as quickly as I can, earlier today, I was researching this as well, and the history of the, the funds used back in 1972, or I should say, the debate going on back in 1972. And I shared this with Alderman Clayton, and I appreciate his words, they were very profound. But I was reading this article, and I mentioned it to him, that there was a debate between, between a Mr. Ashland, who was running for council back in 19, this was April 10, 1972, the League of Women Voters held a debate, and then Mayor Barnett and this Mr. Ashland were debating the Civic Center proposal in 1972. And the cost figures, Mr., or the mayor Barnett at the time said, the only cost figure they had at the time was $3,950,000, and that was quoted in this article. Mr. Ashland countered that it was probably easily going to be $10 to $12 million, and they debated this back and forth. And, and this really leads to exactly what we're talking about tonight, is the options, or I should say, the directing staff to get some numbers. Because I know I make decisions, when I buy things, based on the cost, and I think most people do. And so, we can debate the semantics, but the voters really want to know what it's going to cost. They've heard 120 to 150, but $30 million between the two numbers is a lot. So the fact of the matter is, we need to know, and the voters especially, need to know what the cost is, to, to say whether it's feasible or not. And so, the mayor back at the time, and let me just finish that, he said, since there are no funds to hire architects to make refined are no funds to hire architects to make refined drawings from which exact costs, estimates can be made, we don't really know what the costs are." And he said this back on April 10th, 1972, in a debate, so it's kind of profound, at least for me it was. But I think we need to know the cost. And when I say "we," I mean the taxpayers, so that they can make informed decisions. As we've heard some people speak tonight, they want to make sure that the voters are informed and know what the costs are going to be. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And now we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
I believe this is a substitute motion, correct?
Yes.
I make it as follows. That we direct the mayor and staff to bring forward a financial analysis to include the cost of construction, operation, and the funding sources of all major infrastructure needs, to include Civic Center, streets, drainage, buildings, and other items as identified and appropriate by November 1st, 2012.
Do we have a second for the substitute motion? Okay, we have a second by Laurenti. Any further discussion on the substitute motion?
May I?
Jerry, you still have the floor. Go ahead.
The reason I did it this way is I think that we have the numbers within our halls here of infrastructure, streets, and drainage, and obviously, we have some money or estimates for the Civic Center. We absolutely must make a decision based on the big picture, the total picture, and not just part of it. Because if we do, I'm afraid we're going to make some mistake in being able to do what we need to do in the future, or we won't be able to do what we need to do now. That's why I want to include all of them. I don't think it's any more work, per se, we already have the numbers. Let's put it together, let's look at the big picture. If we only look at one item, it's a mistake. So I ask for your support as a council for this motion. Thank you.
We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Just a question about the motion itself. Is that also looking at, when you say "everything," this building, any upgrades, so forth, heating units? Okay. And then, then my only other question would be, I guess, for staff, is, is there enough time, is that enough time to gather that information? I know some of it does already exist, but I think it's a pertinent question to get it right.
Terry, you want to take a crack at that?
We'll do our best. I mean, it's kind of a big task, but I think a lot of the information we probably have already. We'll throw our resources at it and see what we can come up with.
No one else has any requests to speak from the council? I would like to say a few words. Jerry, I appreciate your motion. I think there's a couple of things that need to be decided relating to that. One is, the motion appears to be offered on the premise that the entire next round or two of 2012 would all go to streets, drainage, buildings, and other, other city infrastructure. And I think we know that not to be the case, based on how the Vision Fund has been structured in the past. Secondly, if this motion passes, it does not address the issue relating to the fairness question that's been offered up regarding the other groups that would be interested in the next round of 2012. And really, what's being discussed is the policy. Ultimately, the council and the community will need to decide, from a policy perspective, do they want to bring the 2012 or the Vision Fund back to pre-1993 process? Which was the original purpose, was for the Civic Center. Thirdly, I think that your motion is overly broad, and that the 81-page budget, which you all have a copy of, helps answer many of those questions. And if you do have that motion, and it does go through, I would ask that you consider bringing a friendly amendment to that, to still allow the penciling out of the costs and look at funding options, so that we can, we can proceed on a dual track. Fourthly, Jerry, I want to strongly say that it is incorrect to make the assumption that we're not looking at other infrastructure needs. Just tonight, we had the $22 million bond for the .16 fund. We have presented multiple presentations on the millions in infrastructure that we're spending. I think the presentation that was presented on May 29 is $23 or $25 million for 2013, I don't have the number in front of me. But we are spending significant amounts of money on, on infrastructure. And so, while I appreciate the motion, I think that the motion creates a request for information, which for the most part is already available, and gets, and basically misses the point of what we're trying to do, and that is, get some numbers that this council can have something to look at. We have, we have a situation here, which because of the motion that was offered last week to fund the project, and because of what I accidentally said, which I shouldn't have said, that I support this project, that, that some people are holding on to that, saying that this was all defined and it's all a done deal, is simply too broad. There isn't anything to go forward on now, except to look at the options and bring it forward for additional discussion and debate. So I would ask that this motion either be more narrowly defined, or withdrawn, or defeated. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to Bonnie Peters.
Wait a minute, I need to answer your challenges, questions directly, sir.
Okay.
And that is, that I do not believe that my motion in any way attempts to circumvent the 2012 intent. There's a lot of other money, as I understand it, coming from sales tax and so forth, within our budget for capital improvements. We're also looking at a drainage fee, and we need to look at other means of raising money to meet the needs. That's what this is about, sir. It's not meant to circumvent, and that is not the only source that we can depend upon. I would be more than happy to discuss the dollar balance issues related to capital infrastructure improvements between last year, this year, and next year, next five years during our budget cycle. But I do feel that for us to make an informed decision on whether we fund this project or not, it's imperative that we look at where we are in the bigger picture, the big system, to do that. Any other way would be foolish and reckless.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll go to Richie. I'm sorry, we'll go to Bonnie.
Somehow I jumped out of queue there. I would make a substitute amendment to, let's see, let me borrow your thing. That we bring forward the funding potential, the potential to fund for the Rushmore Plazek Civic Center, and also to have the attorney weigh in on necessary ordinance changes, and package together what Mr. Wright had asked for, for, I guess, November 1st, or whenever the staff has ready, if they get it sooner than that. It sounds, okay, that would be my motion, if I could get a second, and then I'll talk.
So that is essentially a second substitute motion, which combines the previous two motions. Do we have a second? Second by Doyle.
It sounds like it won't take the staff very long to put together the request. If most of the information's already there?
It do.
Okay. Yeah, that was a question. Do your best. Because Mr. Wright is correct in this, in that we need to really look at all of our issues and lay them out for the public to see, because there are significant infrastructure problems. And of course, as we also know, that different funds fund different things. And so we have, you know, issues with that. So I would just say, let's just kind of do both, move forward. I think we have said enough that we're not ram writing this through, that we've said that we want to honor the vision process. We didn't do a good job of getting launched here, but we do, as Mr. Chapman said, it's a fairness issue, and we all know when we're dealing with our children, or whatever, in our home, that we have to be fair. And that doesn't mean always being equal, but there's a fairness that you give everyone So anyway, I hope you will support this substitute motion, so we can, substitute substitute motion, so we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, the second, there are no, there's no room for additional motions, just so everyone understands. So we'd have to vote up or down on, we'd have to vote this motion down in order for either the previous motions to be considered, just so we're all on the same page. And this motion is essentially a combination of the previous two motions.
Bonnie, does she have a second?
Yes, it was seconded by Doyle. Richie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of an education process here, is that this question will go to, I'm going to start with Pauline, is to make sure that, on the current motion that's on the floor, the funding that we're looking at right now is the half-cent sales tax, is what we're looking at for the Vision Fund, and all the projects that are associated with that. The other part of the motion has to do with the CIP, which is a different portion and separate from the halfpenny sales tax that we're looking at. And then also, a third component is the .16. I believe my question is going to be something like this, and I hope I get it somewhat close to clear. But with all these different facets that we have to deal with, on these different funding sources, in association with all the different projects that we have in front of us, will you still be able to, in conjunction with other city staff, and I'm also looking at, Fire Department has a project in front of us as well, and I know there's some others, without going into a long list, but will you, or your department, be able to fish that all out for us, as far as the halfpenny sales tax, the .16, the CIP funding sources, and all those projects that are associated with that? Will you be able to do that?
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have spreadsheets on each one of those funding sources, as far as what monies are allocated to specific projects. Within the CIP funding source, like Public Works comes to our meeting every month with the five-year plan, so they, they have all those, those projects listed for the five years ensuing. So yes, we should be able to provide to you the information as far as funding sources, as well as current projects that are scheduled to be coming from those funding sources. As you recall, one of the items on tonight's agenda was the .16 Utility Fund. One of the items regarding that fund had to do with projects coming forward, so they're looking at that bonding mechanism for those projects that they had planned. But we should be able to combine all those. I hesitate a little bit in answering your question, just because there are other projects out there that we may not know about, whether it's city, city or outside the city. You know, Terry indicated that he should be able to get numbers for you guys regarding the infrastructure with streets and drainage, those numbers have been provided already. Where I hesitate, quite honestly, would be with the government building side of it, with this facility, with any other government needs, because I don't know that that has been looked at wholeheartedly to determine the needs of those facilities. You know, there's, we don't have a facility manager that, that looks after all the facilities, and so it really boils down to each of the individual departments and the facilities that they are responsible for, on that side of that request. So I hope I answered your question.
Mayor, if I may, to do a little follow-up, and that's exactly why I'm hesitant about supporting this motion, is because there's so many facets to take into consideration of this, and able to actually consolidate all that data into one, one report, or one, one evening of information, that we can get glean out of all of this data that's going to be presented to us. So that's why I'm hesitant about supporting the motion to gather all the additional data in, outside of, or in addition to, the halfpenny sales tax. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I, all due respect to all the substitute motion makers out there, I, well, first of all, I'd like to say, it'll be a while before I make a motion to anything but adjourn from now on, but I'm going to be very careful about what I say, and just really didn't intend this mess. But, you know, with all due respect to the people making, Alderman doing the substitute motions, I think we were asked to vote on whether or not to look for, to bring forward options. And so, I will be voting to deny both of the substitute motion, this motion in particular, excuse me, I'll stay on the subject, but just because I think we've, and Alderman writes other motion, I guess I'll speak when that comes back up. Thank you.
Jerry Wright. Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? Seeing that we're going to proceed directly to a vote, everyone understands the motion?
Read it for sure.
The motion is a combination of the previous two motions. Does that provide enough information? No, we're not, we're not voting on calling the question, we're voting on the, on the motion, which is a combination of the previous two motions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Scott. Wright. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Roberts. Sasso. Nordstrom. That would be a tie vote.
Richie, you did that on purpose. Chair votes no. We're now on the substitute, the first substitute motion, which was Alderman Wright's motion in the question, has still been called, we're going to proceed directly to the vote. All in favor of Jerry's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails with one yes. We'll now go to the original motion. Everyone understands the motion?
Read it, please.
Pauline, would you please read the original motion?
I believe the original motion is to authorize staff to look, to look at and bring forward funding options for the design of the Rushmore Plazek Civic Center expansion project, and to bring forward any necessary ordinance changes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Motion carries with one no, from Jerry Wright. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We'll now move on to items 54 through 67. There was some discussion on item 53, that someone on the council had intended to pull that for separate discussion. I want to leave the opportunity now, if somebody wants to offer a motion to reconsider, otherwise, we're going to continue on. Does he, did he leave? Is Dan Steffner here? Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion by Peterson and a second by Lewis, to reconsider item number 53. All in favor of the reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're, we're now going to reconsider item 53, and this is to deny Destination Rapid City's request to authorize banners on the city parking ramp as public-purpose signs. Public comment is passed, so if someone would like to ask a question or offer a motion, we can start the discussion. And we'll go to, Jerry, you still, all right, we'll go to Charity Doyle.
I'd like to move to deny and then retain the floor, if I may.
Motion is to deny. And we have a second by Laurenti. Charity, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Steffner, I thought you left, if you don't mind. I know we, we had a conversation earlier in the day about being okay with this denial, and at that time, we did explain that we're looking for some kind of mechanism to allow something such as this, just not under a public-purpose designation. Is there anything that you want to add, or give us to ponder?
Well, as we take a look at this, in doing a review over the weekend, you know, we're also considering, in the vision, in the long run, we obviously have a very popular outdoor skating rink, and, you know, we're looking at what the Rush possibly does during the, in the Rush arena, for... In the rush arena for advertisements and so forth for income. So, we take a look at this whole vision, because we have dashboards, and we think about the dashboards as being marketing for Main Street Square, as being an income for Main Street Square, as a 501(c)(3). As we go back and take a look, and I'll reiterate what I did at Legal and Finance, we take no city money, we rely completely on private enterprise, we have the Business Improvement District, which does fund part of Main Street Square, certainly not all of Main Street Square, about 38 percent to our numbers. But I take a look at what is done and agreements that are made in other public forms, once again being the rush. There is marketing, there's advertising that supports the rush, that supports the ice arena, that does a lot of things, that come from the private sector. We need to rely on the private sector for funding mechanisms to make things work down the road and in the future. So, as I take a look at this, I want to look at consideration, and maybe we need to do a review as to what can be done for our purpose at Main Street Square. As I take a look at the banners that are on the ramp, which were in the original design as we had it, and I take a look at possibly public-purpose signs, which we know... I am very aware of all the things that are going on with the different signs and the ordinances, and I have followed that very closely, and I know how sensitive this issue is. We have a public place. We have a very, very public place. This is something that needs to keep moving. We need to keep it progressing forward, and there is, as I have stated many times before, we are not coming back to the city for any funding. We're relying on the private sector, we're relying on the Business Improvement District, and our partners in progress, as we call it, to keep this progress moving. So, what I want to do is take a look and step back as to how this can possibly be done in a way and in a form that meets our standards that we have already set to a degree with what we have in agreement today with things that happened in our local government.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
No, not any questions. I'm just wondering, in discussions through agenda review and whatnot, we know that our city attorney has already been looking at avenues through which we can pursue something to that effect without it being what it is right now. I mean, it's some paid advertising on the side of the city structure, which wasn't allowable. So, I don't know if the motion needs to be amended to continue to direct staff. Do you want it that formal, Mr. Mayor, or can we just let the process go as it's going?
Joel, would you like to provide a recommendation for us?
Well, I don't know if I want to provide a recommendation, but to answer Alderman Doyle's question, I did some research today after the general review where it was discussed and looked at the new ordinance. Frankly, I don't think there's anything in the new ordinance that would allow these signs on this building in this manner. And even if you took away the off-premise advertising and just had it advertise events in the square, I don't know that there's a provision that allows that. There's a provision that allows the city to authorize signs for directional signs, so if they were directional signs, they would be allowed, but just a general, hey, this is what's in the square, or a sign like that that wasn't providing direction would not be allowed.
Well, I think we knew when we were going through many, many sign code hearings and debates that there were going to be some amendments coming forward. You know, we weighed the pros and cons as far as what the public-purpose designation started out with versus what it's become. I think the idea here is that we allow the Civic Center to sell the rights to advertise on the dashboards, for instance, on, you know, anything that you see around the Civic Center has a roof over it. What's the mechanism? You know, there isn't one, and that's the question we have, is why could we not do the same thing for Main Street Square? Or could we not simply because it doesn't have a roof over it? I mean, it's the same kind of idea. So, you know, just because it's outdoor, are we going to disallow any potential advertising on... Are selling the rights to the dashboards at the Main Street Square ice rink? Is there some kind of mechanism, and could we explore that?
Well, sure. I mean, the Civic Center did it based on the public-purpose exception. So, that is an avenue to allow that to occur. Well, no, the indoor signs, that was not something that required because it wasn't outdoor advertising.
I'm not talking about the Civic Center sign, I'm talking about the stuff in interior.
Well, and there's also signs outside the doors, but the interior, the problem with... It's two different situations. You have an outside sign versus, you know, the signs in the square, if they're visible from the street or the public right-of-way, then they would be advertising. It's a different issue than signs inside the building that aren't visible from the street or the public right-of-way. For instance, there was a case in Iowa where there was a baseball field, and the federal government, actually, the Federal Highway Administration actually went after them because you could view the advertisements from the roadway, and it caused a problem. So, is there a way to address it and allow that? Yeah, there probably is, but not under the code you've currently adopted that goes into effect on Saturday.
Mr. Steffner, would the advertisements that you're thinking about on the dashboards be inside the ice rink or facing out of the ice rink? Or have you...
We have not determined what would be best.
And would that make a difference, Joel?
I mean, what's the difference?
I don't know. It's idea phase right now, you know, to flesh it out.
As you look at the dashboards, last year we had 19,000 skaters inside the rink, and obviously, if you have 19,000 skaters inside the rink, you probably have 60,000 to 70,000 people outside viewing it over the course of a whole winter. I would assume we'd probably do a little bit of both. We may alternate them, have one in, one out, and so forth, and they will be like a screen so you can see through it. We don't want to block it, we don't want anything that covers too much area. You want it so it's like it's marketing, so you can read it, yet you can still see your kids skating through it, and obviously, they're only three and a half feet high.
Have you considered the impact on aesthetics with that? Because I think everybody pretty much thinks that the square is, you know, it's a beautiful place, it's very aesthetically pleasing. Have you considered that perhaps putting something like that on the dashboards would detract from that?
You know, I believe, I almost think it's expected. I almost think that people really expect to see something like that. I don't think it's something that takes away... If we do it professionally, which we will do, it will be done very right, or it will not be done. I think it is almost expected by the public. People realize that it does take money to run anything that we do. I mean, tonight, we're talking big discussions about real money. What I'm talking about is minor compared to what we've been talking about, but I almost think it's expected. I believe that people assume, you know what? We're skating, we're having a great time, things are fun, we're having a good night, we're having a good day, and you know, it's great that X is helping support this. Because I just really do believe, if you do it professionally and you do it correctly, it does not become an issue. And as Main Street Square and as Destination Rapid City's president, I can say that we will do it professionally, and it will be done correctly, or you know what? It will not be done.
I'm kind of flashing forward and seeing people bringing forward distracted skating ordinances. I'm kidding. So, you know, you heard Mr. Landin say that right now, we don't have anything in the sign code that we have just worked on that'll be official, I think Friday, the 20th. So, I guess I would be comfortable leaving the motion where it's at right now. If you'd like to get some more data together and bring it forward again, I'd be okay with that. Thank you.
Mayor, this might be a little bit of a reach, but I have the same question, similar questions for Attorney Joel Landin. We used to do advertising on the city buses. Does this kind of fall in that same category?
I don't see them... I mean, it's somewhat similar in that it's advertising, and it was probably for a public purpose on the bus, but, you know, Main Street Rapids or Destination Rapid City is not the city of Rapid City. They're a nonprofit that we have an agreement with to run the square. But you could, as owner of the parking ramp, allow them, under the current code, which is still in effect till Friday, to have these signs as public-purpose signs. You could put restrictions on them, like that they could not sell advertisement to off-premises businesses, but they would be restricted solely to advertising events for the square or related to the square, and approve that, and they would be legal non-conforming come Friday. If you don't do that, the way to make this legal is that they're going to have to bring forward some ordinance amendment in the future that's going to allow this, whether it be public purpose or be more ratcheted down. That's the only way I see it happening.
I've got one more reaching question for you, and this is going to be a real long reach, but on our baseball fields, which Post 22 is also... Post 22 and some other entities in between, us and that organization also has advertising up there on their... On the baseball fields, and I want to say some other baseball fields have some advertising up there. Is that going to be similar?
I wouldn't even go there.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'll yield the floor.
We have no further discussion on the motion. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Motion carries with one no from Steve Laurenti.
No.
Oh, the no's, I'm sorry. Any other no's? All right. We'll now go on to items 54 through 67. Can we have a motion to open public comment? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts, to open public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one speaker request form on these items, and that's on item 67, Brendan Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, and congratulations, new council members. My name is Brendan Casey, I'm with Epic Outdoor Advertising. I have been in front of this body countless numbers of times. I have provided information to this council regarding state and federal law. I've provided both handwritten, emailed, spoken to you privately about our issues with the sign code. Well, the good news is that this will be the last time I'm in front of you regardless of which way you vote. We are petitioning to convert one of our signs to digital, both sides. Some of you who might be aware of the old code, and particularly the incoming code, might be a little dumbfounded on why we're doing this. We have appealed both to the Sign Variance Board and also this council, not under specific code sections, but under what Mr. Landin has called, and I believe the in-house policy on appeals is extraordinary circumstances. And it is our opinion that is absolutely extraordinary that the city of Rapid would install codes that violate state code and, well, may violate the Constitution. My only opportunity is to speak to you before you vote, so let me tell you and relay this now. If you approve these, I'd like to say thank you, and also, I'd like to thank you for your attention to overriding code, overriding state statute. If you deny the code or you deny my request, I guess I will say thank you, but we have exhausted all of our remedies at this level of government. And actually, lastly, I actually feel for Mr. Steffner, because that... I get three calls a week on how punitive and unusable the existing sign code is, and the new one's not that much different. So, you will be hearing these appeals and these pleas for as long as you're sitting on the council, because the pendulum has swung way too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. We do not have any additional speaker request forms. Do we have a motion to close public comment on 54 through 67? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 54. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. First reading, ordinance 5851, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Doak LLC for a rezoning from general agriculture district to low-density residential district. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but located west of the current western terminus of Auburn Drive, extending north and lying west to the current western terminus of Cobalt Drive. And I make the recommendation to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright, to approve first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 55, Amanda.
First reading, ordinance 5852, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Renner &amp; Associates LLC for HDRK Properties LLC for a rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district. Again, I'm not going to read the entirety, but it's located on the north side of East Anamosa Street, east of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Luna Avenue. I make a motion to approve in conjunction with the associated comprehensive plan amendment.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti, to approve item 55. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 56, Amanda.
First reading, ordinance 5853, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by a request by Renner &amp; Associates LLC for HDRK Properties LLC for a rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and Luna Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Laurenti to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 57, Jerry Wright.
Number 12 PL02, excuse me, 12 PL002, a request by Centerline Incorporated for Lacy P6 Land Company Incorporated for a preliminary plat for the proposed Lot 6 of North 80 subdivision, located southeast of the intersection of East Stumer Road and Shelby Avenue. I yield the floor.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Laurenti to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? We'll go to Jerry Wright.
In looking at this file and have had a discussion with the owner's representative, the current memorandum is dated, I believe, February 9th of 2012. Is that the current staff recommendations, and is it accurate?
Yes, we don't change the recommendation after it's gone to Planning Commission.
Okay, and the stipulations, and what are they? Do you know what they are, and they are acted on by the Planning Commission?
Yeah, these are the ones that came forward from Planning Commission as well.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Jerry?
Number 12 PL025, a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Doak LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lots 6 through 10, Block 9, Lots 21 through Located west of the current western terminus of Auburn Drive, extending north and lying west of the current western terminus of Cobalt Drive, I recommend approval. Second.
We have... With stipulations?
With stipulations, thank you.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 59, Jerry.
12 PL026, a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Doak LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed lots of 9 through 15 of Block 1, et cetera, located at the current northern terminus of Three Rivers Drive, and I make a motion to approve with stipulations. Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Laurenti, to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 60. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the report on travel as continued from the June 18th, 2012 council meeting.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle, to acknowledge the report. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked for this travel report to come forward so the new council could see it. It also seems that maybe just one document is attached, so I'd encourage you to go back and look. I think it was sometime in July, there were some other documents attached also that talked about the travel. Travel has been historically been controversial issue. issue in our city, and so I just wanted to let the new members be aware of this. And like I said, I would encourage you to go back and look at the other documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. While we're on that note, I just wanted to point out that the, in terms of the travel budget last year, I believe we spent 6,000 of the allotted 23,000 for mayor and council travel combined. And this year, so far, we've spent approximately 8,000 of the 23,000 that's allotted, and more than 5,000 of that was for former mayor Don Barnett's travel for approximately nine or 10 trips to Rapid City for the planning of the flood commemoration and remembrance. Any further discussion? The motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 61, this is Rushmore Regional Rail Authority, and I will take this one. This was on the agenda by accident at Legal and Finance. It wasn't, wasn't ready for presentation. Ben Snow will be ready to give a presentation at the next Legal and Finance meeting, so if we could have a motion to continue it to the next Legal and Finance. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts to continue to the next Legal and Finance meeting, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
That's fine, I'll handle it later.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we are going to take a 10-minute break. Let's reconvene at quarter after nine. We're now in recess. Who are we missing? All right, let's go ahead and, and start. Item number 62, this is 50-meter pool economic impact presentation. We'll go to Michelle Hoffman.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Hoffman, and I am the president of the Rapsy Racers Swim Team. I'd like to begin by apologizing. I did attempt to email my PowerPoint presentation on Thursday, and I just learned this evening that it failed. So I'm happy to forward this to, this presentation to anyone who wants to take a closer look at this information. Second, I'd like to thank members of the Rapsy Racers, as well as the great swim teams who have patiently waited in order to get, lend me their support. With that, I'll get started. As most of you are aware, there are three 2012 projects which have already been approved. The leisure pool, to be located at the current Horseman location, the 50-meter pool, and at this point, it looks like it would be located at the Roosevelt Swim Center location, and the field house. Before I begin, I'd like to say that I think all three of these projects have merit. And again, they've been approved by the 2012 committee. I was presenting two years ago to the 2012 committee when we first began this round of funding. Unfortunately, city planners came to the table with costs that were grossly underestimated, and thus we have a funding issue. So although I am an advocate of aquatics, and I will be here probably again urging you to complete the leisure pool, as well as the 50-meter pool projects, I'm here primarily this evening to share information with you. You have numerous difficult decisions ahead of you, and I think the best thing I can do for you this evening is present to you the numbers that I've been collecting over the last several months, and these are hard numbers. I'm not an economist, I'm not an engineer. These are numbers you can access from looking at the Fennel feasibility study. The red is actually changes I made to my PowerPoint since I attempted to forward it. So other than that, the red has no significance. Looking at completing the leisure pool and the 50-meter pool, we're looking at approximately total costs, combined costs of $10 million. That includes the site work, which was later included in an addendum. I think some of the numbers that have been previously floated did not include those site costs, and we need to include those. So we're looking at being short $2,250,000 to at least finish the two pool projects at this time. I was not present at the public works meeting, but I did take a chance to watch the video feed, and there does appear to be some remaining funds in the current round of vision funding, and, which would be adequate to at least at this time, complete these two pool projects. With that, I want to talk about the economic impact that a 50-meter pool has on our community. This is, obviously represents Wyoming, North Dakota, and South Dakota. The yellow dots represent the current, current outdoor 50-meter pools in the three-state region. All the outdoor pools are in South Dakota. Rapid City has the only 50-meter pool in western South Dakota. The other three, the, the pink or red arrows, dots, represent indoor facilities. Without the 50-meter pool in Rapid City, competitive swimming will be decimated. It will have a large impact on the novice and age group swimmers, because they will be forced to drive to Aberdeen, Brookings, Sioux Falls, Yankton, Mitchell, or Gillette, Wyoming, to participate in a single meet during long course season. Long course season for competitive swimming runs from April to August, and what we mean by long course is a 50-meter pool that is standard. So as you can see, the presence of a 50-meter pool in Rapid City is significant not only to Rapid City, but also to Wyoming. And this ties into the economic impact. We draw heavily from Wyoming and some surrounding areas. This next slide, and it looks like it's getting cut off a little bit, is, addresses direct spending that has occurred within our community as a result of meets hosted by the Rapsy Racers in the last calendar year. I want to emphasize that this is, this is dramatically, how would I want to say? Again, it's grossly underestimated, because the current CVB formula is based upon $125 per night, per participant. It doesn't factor in parents, grandparents, siblings, and it's also rather low. But despite the conservative nature of that number, visitors who came to attend the swim meets that were hosted just in the last year spent between $303,000 and $408,000. That's direct spending. That's not even economic impact, that's direct spending. And I would point out, I took great care in not including local participants in this analysis, because in the little I have read about economic impact studies, it appears that sometimes these things are overvalued, because they're including local residents who already reside here. So this, again, is just talking about out-of-town participants who, who attended our meets in the last year. Given the fact, I, I included this email from a Wyoming swim coach. She recently attended our 4th of July meet, because I think it highlights how conservative that $125 a night is in terms of direct spending. He stayed with his family at Alex Johnson for two nights at $110, spent $120 just on Friday eating out, $140 eating out on Saturday, $60 on Sunday, $50 at Walmart, $25 at a popcorn shop, $20 at a used bookstore, gas, as well as goggles. He spent from Friday evening to Sunday afternoon, when we finished about 2:00, $685. And actually, that's not a, that's, that, that's spot on. I just traveled to Bismarck, North Dakota for a swim meet this weekend. We didn't do anything fancy. We stayed in a hotel, had two out, we had pizza one night, one out the other night. Otherwise, we ate breakfast at the hotel, and we spent $686.25 between hotel, meals, your miscellaneous food items, gas, oh, but we did buy a swimsuit and pair of goggles. So the $125 that the CVB currently uses, again, is extremely conservative when you look at the numbers. To highlight that, I made some phone calls this last week. I've been extremely busy trying to gather information for you. I contacted the Aberdeen CVB. Their formula is based upon numbers, swimmers times days times $170 per night. They also add a half day based on Sunday. Using the Aberdeen CVB direct spending formula, you are talking about between $157,500 and $214,000 of direct spending at a state meet. And I'm picking the state meet because we recently hosted the 2012 Winter Short Course State Championships. There were 480 swimmers, and 420 of those swimmers were out-of-town participants, staying in our hotels. This is, the 214 is based upon a three-night stay. Many of the athletes come in Thursday night because they compete on Friday, so thus you have the range. I then called Sioux Falls. I'd heard a lot of numbers thrown around, and it's amazing when you start making phone calls, how you discover you're being misinformed. So I like to make phone calls, verify. And this is actually, they've actually purchased from a national corporation an economic impact calculator. But the gal at the Sioux Falls CVB was very helpful. She took their formula that they used to use approximately a year ago. Sioux Falls hosted that state meet last summer. They use a number of $190 per night, and $112 for just a day visit. We don't even have a day visit number that's calculated into our direct spending formula. And Sioux Falls came up, and again, I'm using the state meet numbers, because these are actual concrete numbers. Those of you, and again, those of you who are new to the city council, I took the liberty of bringing one of our meet programs for you to look at. And this is from our state meet program. You can look at the number of teams and the participants. These are not, I'm not trying to overinflate anything. These are actual hard numbers. And Sioux Falls CVB estimated that the economic impact, not direct spending, economic, economic impact was around $525,000, just our winter state meet that we hosted in March of this year. I then contacted the Department of Tourism of South Dakota. They do have an event calculator. Ashley, has the young lady I spoke with, and she was equally helpful. She inputted the information I provided her and came up with an economic impact of $368,000 as a result of our state meet in March. And this is what she forwarded to me. The way the event calculator works is you take the number of attendees, and then you multiply a number to come to approximate calculation of the total attendees. Use the number of 2.5, that's very conservative. I spoke to Sioux Falls, they use the number 2.5, and from some research I completed, 2.5 seems, seems to be the accepted conservative number, because, to be fair, you always want to be conservative in these analyses, so that you don't overestimate the impact that your project may have on the community. But as you can see, the total event spending is calculated 368,000, total economic impact 183,000, tax revenue is $71,000, the state 39,000, sales tax revenue 21,000, and it shows the total gain and loss to South Dakota. And again, I'm happy to try and re-forward this, so you can take a look at these numbers if you'd like. This I just threw together. I will be doing a formal, well, it won't be formal. I'm basically, I'm going to put a survey in our upcoming state meet, because by the way, we are also hosting the 2012 Long Course State Championships in, gosh, less than two weeks, July 27th through the 29th, at Horseman Pool. And at the end of this, I'm extending invitation to all of you. Our honorable mayor has agreed to attend Saturday morning and welcome the, between 450 and 500 athletes that will be in attendance, and we're very excited that he's accepted our invitation, so thank you. But I'm going to be putting a survey in this, ooh, I didn't mean to do that. Did I do something? There, back. Survey in this meet, and I'm going to buy a big box, candy bars, and every kid who completes the survey about where they stayed, where they ate, and what they did, is going to get free candy bar, compliments of Michelle Hoffman, and the local meet director. And I know you know this is true. I will be back, or I will email you a complete list of every business that is listed in those surveys. This is just from our recent meet, and a few friends from the Aberdeen Swim Club who are willing to send to me information about where they stayed this winter. These are all businesses that benefited from our, our meets, just in the last few months. Now, I know some of you, I believe all of you actually, received an email from Councilman Todd Campbell, Aberdeen City Council today. He made the statement to me a few years ago that if you build a quality facility, they will come. That does not mean necessarily more expensive. There's things such as moving diving boards, configuring your gutters the proper way, that make for fast pool, and I have spoken about that before. Swimmers care about coming to swim in a fast pool, which is why I drove five and a half hours to Bismarck this weekend for my daughter. In any event, in 2007, Aberdeen had an old pool that was in very poor shape. They managed to push forward a quality eight-lane facility, and you can see what's happened to their numbers in five years. They've gone from 265 swimmers at their annual meet to 504 swimmers. That is what our 4th of July meet used to benefit from, 500 to 600 swimmers. I know this because my husband was a swimmer 40 years ago. And I received emails from other swim parents in Aberdeen saying, oh, good luck. I still have pictures of my brother standing on the blocks at Horseman Pool from 40 years ago. If we do this right, and we have a wonderful opportunity, we can grow these numbers. And the Rapsy Racers, I think, have proven over the last years that we have the vision and the leadership to do this. The other thing those of you who are new to the council have in front of you is a trifold that the Rapsy Racers sought out a CVB grant for and received. As a result of this mailing, we grew our 2011 Mount Rushmore Classic by 35%. Fortunately, our numbers were down a little bit this year, but that was due to coaches taking their teams to Omaha for the Olympic trials. This is not something we envisioned. But they'll be back next year, and we think we can continue to grow this meet, and we will work very hard, not just to promote, promote competitive swimming, but recreational swimming, as well as the beautiful community that I was actually born and raised in. Very proud of, I did it again, I'm so sorry. Oops, okay. That I was born and raised in. Now, in talking, I'm close to the end. I beg your indulgence. I know we've talked about what-ifs and wanting to have all the information that would benefit you in a decision, so I need to simply address what you could do if somehow we were creative and found a way to enclose this pool. I know money is tight, I know finances are tight, but I think you need to have this information as we move forward. This is just for your information. You can see the kind of pink area, that is what's called central zones. U.S. U S A Swimming breaks the U S into four districts, and we're in what is called central zones. This is significant because I'm about to show you the huge economic impact that an enclosed fifty-meter pool could have on this community. These are four meets, um, within the last year, uh, that are larger meets. All-Stars, my daughter, attended in January, and tell me how many hotels would like to have three hundred and fifty to four hundred swimmers in Rapid City in January and their parents. This is just direct spending, again, based upon the extremely conservative a hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, a night that, um, the local C V B uses. Speedo Sectionals, again, which my daughter attended, um, had eight hundred swimmers. That's in March. Again, we could fill the hotel rooms in Rapid City in March. That's direct spending of four hundred thousand dollars. And again, you can see the Speedo Sectionals coming up, that's gonna be hosted this following weekend, is eight hundred, and Zones also, uh, in the early August, is eight hundred swimmers. Uh, the, this is not a what-if. I happen to know that, and, and this won't impact us, because we're not that far forward in what we're doing with the fifty-meter pool. But I happen to know in talking to another U S A swim official this weekend, that the fourteen-and-under Zones meet for 2013 is still in bid. The reason why is because it's a lot of work for the hosting swim team. But again, I, I stand here before you to tell you that we will do the work to bring these athletes and their families to this community. Um, I'm also, and this is what I really want you to see. This is based upon the eight hundred swimmers I was just talking about for Zones or Speedo Sectionals meet. Um, you multiply it by the two-point-five, you're talking about two thousand attendees. This, again, is based upon the event calculator that is provided by the Department of Tourism. I did not create this. This is from Ashley, and I have her name somewhere, but you, I'll give you her number. She, I gave her the information, and I was very conservative. Eight hundred athletes, I said, just say four hundred rooms. I don't wanna overestimate. I suspect we'll fill more, more than four hundred rooms, because you're talking about officials, parents, the athletes stay, usually stay with their team. Total event spending of one, over one-point-three million dollars over the course of a four-day meet. It's huge to this community. Total economic impact is six hundred and ninety thousand, state tax reva, revenue a hundred and forty-nine thousand, sales tax, uh, eighty-two thousand dollar, over eighty-two thousand dollar revenue. So, again, I'm, I will forward this to you. So, you can see the huge economic impact, that if we had a little vision and tried to think outside the box and find creative ways to make this happen, what this could mean, uh, for this community. Sioux Falls is looking at that. I don't, don't know how many of you have been tracking this, the way I have, probably none of you, but Sioux Falls is recognizing the fact that we live in a winter climate. We're looking at spending five million dollars, uh, on a fifty-meter pool that can be used two and a half months out of the year, versus a nine mil, uh, nine million dollars, um, which would allow us to have a pool twelve months out of the year and allow us to bring these events to Rapid City. Um, we, we need this for our youth, we need this for our community. Swimming is one of the few sports from cradle to grave that you can participate in. Um, and, and, let's see, almost to the end, which is, brings me toward, um, almost to the conclusion. This isn't just about competitive swimming, it's also not just about the economic impact it would have on area businesses. It's also about what we can do for our community on a day-in and day-out basis, and I'm talking about programming. For those of you who have been to the swim center, you know that if you go down to the swim center during prime time, um, there's no water space. Um, swimmers are on top of each other, um, members of the community are clamoring for water aerobics, lap lanes, um, there's a huge need. And there's a lot of possibilities in terms of programming for our community, whether it's public diving, whether it's competitive diving, scuba diving, expanding aquatic exercise classes, um, aquatics therapy, um, for senior citizens, adaptive aquatics, um, for persons with disabilities, learn-to-swim programs, outreach to public schools, Black Hills Guard Games, there's a lot of possibilities that we could do with an indoor facility. And also, you need to understand that, we keep talking about fifty-meter pool. Let's wrap our minds around the idea that during the winter months, it becomes a twenty-two lane, twenty-five yard pool. So, a lot of possibilities in terms of programming, day in and day out for our, for, uh, the citizens of Rapid City. And thus, creative thinking. Let's think outside the box in terms of how we might make this happen. Um, partnerships with the Rapsi Area Schools, partnership with Rapsi Regional Black Hills Orthopedics, um, to create a program, uh, rehabilitation program using this facility for our senior citizens, expanding our water aerobics for senior citizens, or adaptive aquatics. South Dakota School Mines and Technology. I think you all have read that the School Mines is proposing a seven million dollar improvement, um, to build a recreation center. I personally spoke to Tim Henderson today, uh, Finance and Business. Not saying it, that it, after certain meetings, whether it's where we would wanna go, or the city council would wanna go, but he told me that they would be open to a partnership with the city of Rapid City in terms of perhaps putting a fifty-meter pool within that, um, recreation center and then opening it up to the public. This is what Bismarck did when they built their wellness center and their fifty-meter pool. It was a partnership between Bismarck State College and the city of Bismarck. So, again, just trying to present ideas, information, let's try and think outside the box. Um, this is just numbers out of Mr. Fennell's, um, report, again emphasizing the difference between the two projects, but again, we're talking about a pool that you could use two and a half months out of, twelve months out of a year, out of the year. Um, he did confirm with me that, that the site work there that's highlighted is associated with the Field House. Again, I think the Field House is a worthy project, but I'm here advocating for aquatics. Um, these are all projects that were already approved by the 2012 committee out, yeah, I would like to see all of them, um, fulfilled, but that's, that's your decision. There are some site work, uh, costs associated with the outdoor pool, but I included them in my first slide. Um, two slides left. Spoke to Mr. Fennell, he is an architect, he's looking at the big vision when he came, when he, you know, he designs, uh, pools and, and comes up with a number for you. He did share with me that, yeah, there are possibilities when you get down to perhaps the design work, where you could look at the possibility of cost savings, but that's not what the architect does right now. That's something that would come later, to see whether there are ways to scale back the cost of an indoor facility. But these are possibilities, the H VAC modifications, modifications to plumbing, um, these are things that could be discussed in a design phase. And so, finally, um, I thank you very, very much for your time and attention. I know you're all, um, as weary as I am. We're hosting the 2012 Long Course State Championships, July twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. There will be approximately four hundred and fifty to five hundred athletes in attendance, so come early, so you can get a parking spot. But, uh, I would, um, extend a personal invitation to each and every one of you to join us at nine forty-five A M. on Saturday. That's when most of the teams will be represented. You'll get a full flavor of a swim meet, and I will be there personally to greet you and answer any questions that you may have, and we'll be able to, um, listen, uh, to, um, the honorable mayor's, um, welcoming statements, and, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any motion, uh, to acknowledge or discussion? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Lewis to acknowledge any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number sixty-three. Jerry, can you read this in the record for us? Do we have a motion or a discussion? Go to Charity.
We had a lot of discussion about this in agenda review this morning, um, knowing that Ms. Hoffman would be bringing forward some economic data, knowing that, um, even though the projects have already been approved, there are definitely some funding constraints. I talked first.
Nobody else had, nobody else had, has requested to speak. Richie has requested to speak, so we can go to him and then come back to you. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, um, at this stage, I'll just make the motion to acknowledge the final report.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Jerry Wright.
Mayor.
And you still have the floor, Richie.
Mayor, just, just to, uh, um, add a couple of my, my thoughts on this is just, the reason why I'm acknowledging the final report is that I've, I've heard from another consultant that's encouraging us to put in a twenty-five meter pool, and then I heard from, uh, the design consultant for some reconsiderations, and, uh, there's, uh, also in the impact analysis, uh, we've been getting some different formulas, so I'd like to have an opportunity to just ca, take a little bit closer study on the, uh, the use of a multiplier or the calculator, uh, so I can have a little more, more time to study that. And, um, I'm, I'm not the greatest at economics, uh, and so I'd just like to, need a little more time to study the, the economic factors. Uh, that's my motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. We'll go to Charity.
All right, we'll do this in the right order this time. I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue this item number sixty-three, um, to include discussion about the fifty-meter pool option as well, uh, to the next vision meeting, as well as, uh, direct Parks and Rec staff to, um, start to look at the numbers and see, um, how we can massage them, how we can possibly make that work.
Okay, we have a motion by Doyle and a second by Lewis to take this to the next vision fund meeting, which has not been set, so council leadership and potentially August twenty-seventh, but that will need to be set with the assistance of council leadership and finance office staff. Go to Jerry Wright.
I support the motion, but it sure would be nice if we had a summary of all of the infrastructure needs, to include the funding and how we're gonna pay for them and programming to make our decisions in an intelligent, programmed way. Thank you. I support the, uh, motion.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Uh, today in your email, you received, um, some options for dates for, um, a vision fund that where we will address the Horace Man Park issues, uh, to include the leisure pool and the tank pool at Roosevelt. Uh, the Horace Man Pool definitely needs to go into Horace Man Park, the leisure pool. And, uh, so anyway, I've heard back from some of you, uh, for your preferences for different dates, so we will be setting that meeting shortly once I hear from the rest of you, or the majority of the rest of you. Thank you.
We'll go to Charity.
Okay, just one more quick comment to Mr. Wright's comments. It's one more piece of the puzzle, Jerry.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bids?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We have just one bid to award tonight for the Elk Vale Lift Station Upgrade Project. We received five bids on this project, and the recommendation is to award the base bid only to Dean Kurtz Construction Company in the amount of four million, nine hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson, to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number sixty-five, this is, uh, 2020 Strategic Plan Update. Thank you, Jenny Nelson, for your extreme patience. You now have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am excited to be here tonight, and, uh, if we could just, uh, queue up the PowerPoint, I'd appreciate it. Um, I had the opportunity to be here in front of the council in November to talk to you a little bit about the, uh, strategic vision. I think that tonight, the word vision has been used, I think, over twenty, thirty times, so it seems very appropriate. I'm going to be giving you a very brief overview. In fact, I'm not going to be showing all of these slides. Um, I forgot, okay, here we go. I better put my glasses on so I can see how to move this. All right. What I'd like to do is very quickly go through this PowerPoint. It is, um, on the, it's attached to the agenda so that you can look at it later. But basically, what this is, it's a, uh, overview of what we have done so far. In the fall of two thousand and nine, the, um, citizens were asked two questions. How do you envision Rapid City looking in the year 2020, and what would you like Rapid City to be in the year 2020? What happened then was there was a process. The two, uh, the questions were asked of stakeholders of the community, the city council, department heads, city staff, and the Rapid City community through the Rapid City website. Overall, there were two hundred and sixty people that responded in depth. What happened after that was that we compiled the, uh, responses, and we brought together a steering committee that were tasked with basically authoring a, uh, basically five strategic initiatives for the city. Here were the, uh, committee members at the time. I want to read to you the five goals, and then I would like to ask, um, two of the chairs of Goals One and Three and Goals Two to speak about where this is at right now. So, first of all, here's the first goal. By 2020, Rapid City will be recognized as a leader in attracting, expanding, and retaining diverse businesses that offer higher skilled positions and higher total compensation employment opportunities. This will be evidenced by the growth that exceeds the national economic standards. Certainly, you've been talking a lot about these things tonight. By 2020, Goal Two says, will develop and implement a beautification program, beginning with the appearance of its entrances, and expanding to the overall community that embodies a consistent theme which is welcoming, aesthetically pleasing, and pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly. Goal Three is, by 2020, Rapid City will be nationally recognized by industry trade measures as a premier regional hub for healthcare, education, entertainment, tourism, retirement, business, technology, agriculture, and transportation. Number Four, by 2020, Rapid City will develop an interconnected parks, our arts, and recreation system that provides diverse opportunities for enjoyment and adds to our family-friendly quality of life. And lastly, Goal Five is, by 2020, Rapid City will have in place an accessible, affordable, convenient, and safe transportation, safe transportation system that addresses community needs. The council approved these, uh, five strategic goals in April of two thousand and ten. So, what's been happening since then? Well, a lot. At that point, we launched initially Goals One and Two, because we wanted to make sure that we didn't dilute and, um, kind of overwhelm our community by taking on all five. The public was invited, and they joined committees Goals One and Two. At that time, Goal One was chaired by Jeff Carsrude, and Goal Two was, uh, first chaired by Lyndalee Wyken and followed by Pat Roslin. And again, one of the things that I wanna let you know is these committees have been working together for, they worked together for over a year, actually closer to two years. You were, the council was presented, um, with the findings, um, both in February, May, and June of two thousand and eleven. And you also have many of the recommendations linked in documents that are on this, um, on the agenda. So, I'm not gonna really go in much to Goal One and Goal, because I'm going to ask Jeff Carsrude to speak to both Goal One and Goal Three, and I'm going to be asking, um, Steve Dozier to speak to Goal Two. But basically, what Goal One did was they created a baseline. Many of you may have seen the document that they created that had to do with a partnership with Black Hills Vision and Rapid City Economic Development. We, it's a great document, and if you haven't read it, I hope you will. Goal Two came up with five priorities that are listed as following. Uh, welcome signs, bearing overhead utilities, uh, lines, removing or reducing billboards, more active code enforcement, and, and really, construction, repair sidewalks, bike lanes, and bike trails. So, where are we now? Well, Goal One and Goal Three, what happened was, originally, these committees were appointed by the mayor, and what happened was we realized that particularly One and Three are a pair on the same issue related to economic development. Um, Rapid City Economic Development Partnership have taken these, the leadership in these two goals. Goal Two- have taken the leadership in these two goals. Goal Two, the Standing Committee of the Rapid City Beautification Committee, is taking a lead in continuing with Goal Two. At this point, our hope is to launch Goal Four, possibly this fall. And then we are still debating when Goal Five will be announced. At this point, I would like to introduce both Jeff Carsrude, who will be going first, and Steve Dozier, who will be going second. Jeff is the chairman of Goal One and Goal Two, Goal Three, I'm sorry, and Steve is the chairman of Goal Two. I want to end my statements by saying, thank you so much for the opportunity to work on this. I've been working on this project since its inception. I think it's very exciting that the city took such a forward-looking vision, and I feel privileged to be part of this project. So thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Jenny. I'm Jeff Carsrude. I'm a local business owner. I'm owner and president of Rapid City Win Nelson Plumbing Supply here in Rapid City. And also, she had said I'm the chairman for the Goal One and Goal Three, actually. I'm the past chair, but I'm the current chair for the Rapid City Economic Development Partnership. So we decided about a couple months ago that it might make sense for gentleman Rick Rylance to step up to that position and chair the goal part, because I'm already chair of Economic Development, and he's actually the past chair two years ago of Economic Development. So we, it's all working together. So my first slide, if you want to go on to the next, the next slide, I was going to have to do it. Other than the top part there, which is Rick Rylance, I would be shown as past chair. Those are the folks that are involved in this work. And I'm going to just pause there really quick. You guys will get a copy of this. But obviously, this is, this is all the leaders in our community. I shouldn't say all of them. This represents a good share of our leadership. We've been working on this for about two years. It requires a study to find out that some of the things we're actually already doing, which we always know that. But it's always good to be focused. What we decided to do is we decided to come up with seven items that we would focus on. When I say items, clusters, different things that we can be good at, we already are good at, or we're positioned well, whether it's, whether it's geographically or whatever. So go on to the next slide. And so, go on to the next one. So what we did is we decided to go ahead and look at seven. Well, we decided that actually seven was too broad. We went with six. And here in a second, I'm going to show you which ones they are. But I wanted to show this slide because it's not just Rapid City that we work on and work with. It's the Rapid City area, which involves other parts of the community. Next slide. It's new companies coming to town. Next slide. It's also ones that increase their employment from 100 and, well, there's 162 jobs right there over three years. That's an increase. That's one of our local companies. Next slide. It is, it's a partnership of all these different components. And I can tell you that Rapid City Economic Development, along with Black Hills Vision, I can report to you that in years past, we haven't always worked together as groups. When I got involved with Economic Development on the board, which was seven years ago, that was one of the reasons why I got involved, because I thought, you know what? We're doing too many, there's too many groups saying they're doing the same things, and they probably were in many cases. We need to consolidate our energies. So I can tell you today that of those probably five different working groups, we're down to about three really focused groups. Next slide. The slides here are two of the six clusters. We'll go through each one of them. Business Services, Energy Extractive, next slide, Healthcare and Life Sciences, Finance and Insurance, Metalworks, Metalwork Manufacturing, Food and Beverage Manufacturing. Those are the six clusters. Now, there's a number that we look at in Economic Development. It's 36,650. That's the average income in this area. So we look, and we want to look at jobs above that bar. Yes, we'll help and assist people who are underneath that level, because we always want more jobs. But our focus is over 36,650. Well, in the last five years alone, in the six clusters that we're starting, that we're focusing on right now, we've already created 4,524 jobs, which is a wage impact of $213 million. If we continue to focus on those six clusters, the average of those, 47,121, which is, which is an increase in wages, average of 13,000. Those numbers are real. Those aren't, those aren't ones that we've just come up with. Those are real numbers. Next slide. And there's a reason why our unemployment is less than half the national average, is because we have been working on this, and we will continue to work on that. Next slide. How we came up, how we got smarter at this is we, is we, is we launched a study with Innovation Economics, and they took a look at what we, what we are as a community and what we could be as far as jobs. This was funded, half Rapid City Economic Development and half Black Hills Vision. Now, I need to, I need to back up, because yes, this did, this did start as a committee for a strategic plan, but we were unfunded. So we found a way to be able to get smarter, and that's how we did it. Next slide. So what we've done is, is we've raised the bar. We'll continue to get smarter. We've got a lot of energy towards it, and we, and main thing is, we have buy-in. Tonight, I heard many, 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 many times, "economic impact." We're getting better because we used to think that those things that we're talking about earlier were economic development. We create the jobs on the economic development side, so the impact can be seen through those other things, whether it's spending or projects. So I thank you for your time and would entertain any questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Oh, yes.
Okay, we will. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
I'd like to thank the presenters for coming forward with this update. I recently attended one of the updates that was given, or presentation orientation at the university that had to do with, and tied in with, involved with the governor's office economic development. Jeff, I appreciate your enthusiasm and going forward with these projects, specifically on the goals. But I'm a little dismayed about the comments that were made at that university orientation. What I'm concerned about is the screening process for bringing in out-of-state employees. And that, that bothered me a whole lot, and I'm just kind of expressing my concern on that specific issue tonight. Because if we want to try to bring in, screening out well-qualified people, bringing into this, to the state and help us bring up the wages, that is an area of very great concern for me.
But to be fair, Richie, the program that was presented there was actually from the state, not from the local. And what they're, what they're doing there is they, is they've contracted with a company called Manpower.
Yes.
To, to, to essentially vet and hire people. But they do give the local state residents a certain number of days to apply first. If none of those, if it's not fulfilled within that time period within the state, then they look outside the state. So in my opinion, you know, I'm not going to speak for them, but you gotta, you gotta do something. So we do actually give the state, the state residents first shot at it.
Agreed. And hopefully, we will continue doing that. But where I was really, really concerned with is the area, the screening of the people that are coming in from out-of-state, and who would be, who would Manpower be in, in the screening process.
That's a question for the governor.
Thank you.
Yep.
I yield the floor.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for your presentation. Are y'all planning to submit a request for more funding through the Vision Fund, like you did this last round?
On behalf of Vision? Because I'm really not part of Vision.
Okay. Well, the economic development, didn't they get Vision Funds, like two and a half million, or?
There again, we have too many things that kind of sound, I thought you meant Black Hills Vision, but you're talking about the Vision Fund, which is the old 2012. We have applied in this last, which we did receive. Are you talking about future?
Right. As y'all discussed, if you're going to be...
Well, the business that we do is ongoing. So I'm going to tell you that, that, you know, with, again, I'm one person on the board, but I can, you know, it does take funding to be able to help our local business owners increase their, their jobs, and also to help attract companies to come to this area. So.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a fair enough answer?
I assume you'd probably be looking for more money, given my guess.
We're not looking for less.
Any further questions? Jenny, you have the floor again.
And if you could go back, bring the presentation up, go back two slides. Jenny reminded me, we've got one page there. It's blackhillsmeansbusiness.com. And we created a neutral site that doesn't bring, oh, you know what? I missed a whole part. We created a neutral entity so that Black Hills Vision and Rapid City Economic Development and the Vision and the strategic plan part of it, all of these components can funnel to a neutral area. It's called blackhillsmeansbusiness.com. And we were actually going to put on a big workshop to find out if we had industry champions to be able to start creating these six groups, which is local companies who are actually going to carry this torch for us. We've actually just recently postponed that because we've got over 100 volunteer companies who have stepped up and said they want to help. So we really, truly actually have those six components working. And each one of those six clusters has an industry champion. So we're going to be moving forward, and instead of doing one big one, we're going to do six smaller ones, more focused on that part of the business. So does that make sense? Or do you have any questions on that? Yeah, around the bottom there. Yep. Okay. Yep, blackhillsmeansbusiness.com. Thank you. And welcome to our new council, council folk.
I'd like to now introduce Steve Dozier, who's representing the Beautification Committee. And as I said, there was a transition from Goal Two to the Beautification. So thanks, Steve.
Thank you. I think I presented a little bit of this to some of the members of the CIP Committee a couple weeks ago. But it's, it's a little bit strange. We're talking about visions stuff. There are two, there were two Beautification Committees for a while here, and that's a little bit confusing. Mayor Hanks established one to basically kick off the Goal Two of the 2020 Vision. It did its work, like Jenny alluded to, came up with five priorities, and then disbanded. The Beautification Committee, which I was a chair, am I the chairman of, and also was a member of that 2020 Beautification at the same time, so I was on two Beautification Committees at the same time. So I don't want you to get confused about what was going on. The Beautification Committee that I'm chairman of was established in 1989, has a bylaws, has a vision, has a vision or a mission statement. And so we've been in business for the city, working to do things for the city for about 23 years. Jenny came to us in February and asked us to take over kind of a lead role in the Vision, or the Goal Two of the Vision 2020 Plan. And we, as volunteers, I think, thought about it pretty hard, because that's all we are, is volunteers. We don't have any budget. We don't, you know, have a leader. We don't have an executive director. We don't, you know, we meet once a month. And so trying to coordinate what I consider maybe a huge get-your-arms-around-it goal, we did vote to take on that, this goal of trying to take the lead role in the 2020 Goal Two. At the same time that the 2020 Beautification Committee was working on their priorities, we were working on some ourselves. We have since got a document published on our website called our Enhancement Program. I'd encourage you to go look at it. Adopted in 2012. Some of you have probably already seen it. They're on the CIP Committee. It lists about seven different categories, has projects underneath it that we'd like to see funding for. It's not a five-year plan, because there is no budget for any of it. This is just the cover sheet. You'll have to get into pages two through four, two through five, to actually, you know, read it and understand it. I'm going to tell you the priorities, the five priorities that the 2020 Beautification Committee came up with are actually contained within certain categories within this plan also. But I consider this one much more comprehensive, and I think a little more thought went into it, I'll be honest with you. So that's basically all I have right now, because we were just asked in February by Jenny to do this. So we're a little bit, our committee members weren't participates, or participants in the 2020 process. So they're getting used to what, what happened with the 2020 process and not, you know, not our own. So I'll entertain any questions. I hope you have time to read our Enhancement Program, and hopefully, we can do something for Rapid in the future if we can gain some money. So.
Thank you, Steve. We'll first go to Chad Lewis. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually just going to say, I want to thank you folks for sticking around this late tonight. I know it's been quite a task to do so, and I really appreciate the work you're doing down there. And I apologize for us taking so long to get to you, but great job. Hopefully, everybody's still awake and acknowledging this. Just, once again, that's all I was wanting to acknowledge. Thank you.
I missed my date with Movie Under the Stars.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd just like to close by. Again, with the documents that Steve talked about, they actually are under Parks and Rec. And if you go to Parks and Rec and look at Beautification Enhancement Plan, that document is there as well. We look forward to continue to report to you on, on the progress of this project. I think this is not something that is short-term. I think tonight, you had a lot of discussion about long-term vision, about priorities. And I feel privileged to, to be part of this project. And if there are no other questions, I will, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Mayor, I'd like to ask you if you put money in this coming budget for beautification? If we added money for it? If you can remember off the top of your head. I don't remember seeing any.
There's various different funding sources for beautification items, like, for example, the, the work that will be done up by Kmart. And Parks and Rec has, you know, a number of beautification items that they do. But as far as a specific line item for beautification, no. But what we have done is Parks and Recreation is providing more support for the Beautification Committee, helping to take that committee to the next level. And they are having, now having their, their meetings over at the Parks and Recreation Headquarters with staff support.
Okay, I'm glad that they're getting more support. But this is really a challenge to the council, is that this is supposedly, beautification is supposedly a goal for 2020, but yet they're not, they don't even have their own line item. They don't have any money. So it would either be, we should give them some money, or we should take it off of our goal. Because, you know, we're kind of talking out of both sides of our mouths. We say we want beautification, but then we're not funding it. So I think it's something we need to look at when we start opening up the budget. And thank y'all very much, and especially thanks to all those endless, endless volunteer hours that are put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that Steve has actually been to the CIP Committee requesting funding and showing the five-year plan that they have come forward with as a committee, as well as, we had asked them at that time to come back with some cost estimates. And we requested that they would start to work more closely with the Parks and Rec Department and also Public Works to build in beautification along with their normal projects that they're doing. Like the mayor said, there's not a specific line item. Brett pointed out that the Mount Rushmore Road Corridor, the majority of that funding is for beautification purposes, because the state was coming through for the, the other improvements, but they still need the beautification money. So that is in the Vision Plan as far as the Vision Fund funding goes. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Pauline. Steve, did you have any final comments to add?
The only thing I can say, my charge to my committee, the last meeting we had, was to come back with the, try and list the number of entities within Rapid City who maybe have their finger involved in beautification or enhancement. And I think we're going to find out it's 40, 50, 60 different groups. And trying to coordinate that number of groups into a, you know, composite goal or vision is going to be a pretty tough thing to do, I think. But I think you're going to be surprised when we get a, you know, maybe a published list of all the... a published list of all those people and, and groups of how many there actually are, so. That's, that's our current project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts to acknowledge, and we have a, a third by Chad Lewis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 66. Amanda, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to acknowledge withdrawal of the appeal of residential contractor license revocation by Jason Barnum Home Improvements LLC.
We have a motion by Amanda and a second by John Roberts. I would like to say, it looks, we have a speaker light to speak on this one, and I'm going to hand the gavel over to Bonnie Peterson, abstain from presiding over this particular debate and discussion, as our family has also had issues with Jason Barnum and work that he performed on, on our home, and so I think it'd be the right thing to do to hand the gavel over to Bonnie for this discussion.
Mr. Sasso?
Just with the acknowledging, the withdrawal is one thing, but I guess my big concern would be, could he create a different LLC and be able to perform work inside of Rapid City and victimize other residents?
Okay, Mr. Landine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would, I think if we knew it was him and were aware of it, that they would look at any way possible to prevent him from getting a license at this point. I mean, ultimately, the purpose of the Residential Contractors Board, which has to approve the licenses, protect the public, and that's what we would intend to do, so.
Would there, would there be anything, or should there be anything that we can, should add to this acknowledgement of the withdrawal to make sure that in the future?
No. I mean, really, it's not properly in front of you, but because he had previously appealed to the City Council, and you were aware of the issue, and it had been sent back to the Board, we thought it was appropriate to bring it forward, so you knew how it had been resolved and why it wasn't coming back to you. So really, under the, he would have needed to appeal it in order to get back in front of you properly, so really, there's nothing in front of you or anything that you can take action on, on the license.
Okay, as far as preventing anything in the future, right now, there wouldn't be anything that we would be able to do?
I mean, the, this gentleman's license has been revoked by the Residential Contractors Board. He has not appealed that. In fact, he, he basically withdrew his appeal. They have, they have revoked his license. He is not able to get a license at this point.
So even under a different LLC, he still would not be able to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., okay, I was going to say that Mr. Lewis has something to, maybe, oh.
You know, obviously, this, may I address Aldrin Sasso? And I do believe, Joel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it goes with the person, not with the company. I mean, I'm a licensed contractor, but I can build under several different entities if I wish, so I believe this is the, now, this effectively takes him out of the, out of the game, so I don't think you can come back with, you know, he has to have a name on the, on the thing that says who the contractor is. Is that correct, Joel?
That's correct. At this point, I would imagine he's looking for greener pastures.
Thank you.
Pauline, did, last time we had this discussion, I, I don't remember if it was you or who that talked about the procedure, so once someone loses their license, they have to go through, or was it, maybe it was Terry? Okay, well, okay, um, okay, Brad, was you?
Yeah, what the Board will do is if they can revoke the license, and then if they want to appeal it, then obviously it comes to you. You send it back to the Residential Contractors Board in the interim. He's decided to withdraw the appeal back to you. The Board's recommendation to continue the revocation will stay in place.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just was recently assigned to this residential sign contractor board, and if this name happens to come up in the future, we'll be on our, on guard for this, aware, and we'll deal with the issue as it comes up then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights. We have a motion to acknowledge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll hand this back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Bonnie. Item number 67. Amanda, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. A request by Epic Outdoor Advertising, 720 St. Anne Street, Rapid City, South Dakota, 57701, to appeal the denial of an application for a variance to the sign code to allow off-premise sign to exceed 250 square feet, to allow off-premise sign within 2,000 feet of another off-premise sign, to allow off-premise sign to exceed 30 feet in height, to allow off-premise sign in railroad right-of-way, to allow off-premise LED sign, to allow structural altercation, sorry, alterations to a legal non-conforming off-premise sign of the Rapid City Municipal Code for the property located at D, M, and E right-of-way near Cheyenne Boulevard at Elk Vale Road, Rapid City, legally described as southwest quarter of the southwest quarter located in Section 27. And I yield the floor.
Okay, floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Okay, we will go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie, please consider a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will do that. I, let's see, if I make this motion correctly, it sounds succinct. I will make a motion to deny the appeal on all three counts, and for this sign located on the right-of-way near Cheyenne Boulevard, Elk Vale Road. Hopefully, I've got the motion made correctly.
I think there are five counts, so I think you.
Is it, did I say?
Six. There's multiples. You just say all counts?
Multiple counts, then.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson to deny the appeal on all counts.
Mayor?
Richie has told the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I sat on the sign code board, and this is, item came up in front of the Board, and just to clarify one point and, or maybe even several, but confirm this with the City Attorney's Office, that Epic Sign has the ability to ask for a waiver, because these are not prohibited by any means. These are just circumstances where not, there, we can go through a variance on this, or they, Epic Sign can ask for a variance, so that's why this is in front of us, is the City Council, and we denied that at the variance Board, and so hopefully we'll support the sign code Board. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson?
I see here that we also have a neighbor that is in favor of the denial, so I'll be supporting this motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to uphold the denial. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no. All, let's do a roll call. I've got a couple of council members.
Are we voting for or against the denial here?
The motion, a, a yes vote is to uphold the denial.
Okay.
A no vote is to grant the request.
Scott is aye. Wright?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Doyle?
Aye.
Lewis?
Roberts.
Sasso?
Aye.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Laurenti?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are now on public hearing items. Item 68 through 74, we have a motion to open public hearing. Motion by Doyle, second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 68 to 74. The public hearing will remain open at this time. We have a motion to continue items 68 until August 6. We have a, a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson to continue 68 till August 6. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent public hearing items 69 through 73. Would anyone like to remove any of these items? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve all of them?
Remove.
Motion by Doyle, second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 74. Jerry, can you read this into the record for us?
Item number 12, SV001, a request by Centerline Incorporated for Lazy P6 Land Company Incorporated for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install water and sewer along Kitchen Boulevard as per Chapter 16.6 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located southeast of the intersection of East Stumer Road and Shelby Avenue, and I so move approval. Are there stipulations on that? What stipulations?
Okay, motion by Wright, second by Lewis to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 75, bill list.
The bill list is that which is before you, for a total of $9,224,325.49.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Peterson to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Doyle, second by everyone else.
I think we have to stick around a little longer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.